Good evening, everybody, and welcome to the August 1st. That's right, August 1st, 2024 regular meeting of the Inlarge City School District Board of Education. At this time, I want to remind everybody, let me just make sure I got my stuff here, that the agenda was prepared in advance of tonight's meeting. The final agenda for tonight's meeting is subject to change at the time of the meeting, and that any changes will be noted at the time they are made, and again, after the meeting on the public board minutes, which are available on the district's website. And if I can have Ms. Romero do the same in Spanish, please.
La junta designará una parte de su agenda de reunión para comentarios públicos. No. Sorry. Esta agenda fue preparada antes de la reunión de esta noche. La agenda final para la reunión de esta noche está sujeta a cambios en el momento de la reunión. Cualquier cambio se notará en el momento en que se realice, y nuevamente después de la reunión en las actas de la junta pública que están disponibles en el sitio web del distrito.
Gracias. And now, if everybody could please stand for our pledge allegiance, and if you can remain standing after the pledge of allegiance for a moment of silence, Ms. Tobiasin.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America. And to the republic of America, with its stand, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Mr. Perino?
Thank you, President Estrada. First moment of silence this evening is for Michael Joseph Fumorelli, and for the people who are new here this evening, we do these out of respect of those who have gone before us, who were members of the district or who related closely to members of the district. Mr. Fumorelli, the husband of Gail Johnson. Gail taught music in the district for many, many decades. I think she had 33 years of service before retiring, and she still comes back to help the music department with various performances. Mike Fumorelli was a big man. He was big in stature, and he was also big in voice. Arguably, he had one of the first talk shows in the country. It was Orange County Speaks. It was in the 60s and the early 70s. And Orange County Speaks discussed a variety of topics: education, politics, finances, on and on. And it was a very entertaining, very entertaining program. Mike had the capacity to speak about and to debate on just about any subject. I talked to him a number of times. After his career in radio, then he went on to have a career in the New York City Metropolitan Transit Authority. He also served his community as a member of Mark Carmel Church and a lecturer at the church. Very intelligent, very intelligent individual. The next moment of silence this evening is for Sandra Bristol Massey. Sandra Bristol Massey, the stepmother of Louis, Lou Massey Jr., and Lou Massey is a very respected instructor at Presidential Park Elementary School. Lou is starting his 24th year this year. Mrs. Massey served as a career in public relations. She was, served the community as a, on the developmental board of Horton Hospital, which of course is today Garnett, and she served later at Orange Regional and also at Garnett. She was a very active in the community, volunteered for many organizations: the Letton Sewing Club, the Brittany Miller Foundation in church, the Mark Carmel Church, the Holy Name of Jesus, the Elks Association. She was a past Elks First Lady. So she gave back in many ways to the community. Again, another person who will be missed. The next moment of silence this evening, unfortunately, we have a number of these. Angelina Anna Spears. Anna Spears was a monitor at the Mechanics Town School, which then became, of course, the William Carter School. Bill Spears, she married Bill Spears, who predeceased her, and Bill was on her custodial staff, so it was a district, a district family. Again, Mrs. Spears served the community, not only in her church, but as a member of the Orange Regional Medical Center Auxiliary and the Professional Business Women's Association. So all of these individuals, all of these individuals served the community and served the district for a number of years. And I also want to say in finishing that Mr. Estrada did an excellent job in delivering the eulogy at Dick Wolf Slayer's mass. So please remember all these people, along with Dick Wolf Slayer, who served for 34 years, beginning in 1966. He not only won a number of games, but he also mentored a number of students, which had a lasting effect on these young people. So again, remember these people in your thoughts and prayers. Thank you so much.
Thank you, Mr. Perino. And with the board's permission, in September, the weekend of September 21st, so the board meeting before that, I probably will want to repeat a moment of silence for Dick Wolf Slayer in honor of him during Erie Bell Week. If that's okay, John, I'll have you do that again, because I think it's important. Moving on, also, before we move on, I also do want to thank my new sidekick this evening, Ms. Adoma, who's filling in for our superintendent, who's enjoying some well-deserved R and R for the next couple of weeks. So welcome aboard.
Thank you.
So you're supposed to hit me, you realize when I mess up, so. Next, the mission of the Inlarge City School District, Mr. Rhett.
We strive to provide fiscally sound educational opportunities in a safe environment that continuously supports our diverse student population. We will enable all students to graduate, to reach their full potential, to become full lifelong learners, and to be competitive, productive members of society.
Thank you, Mr. Rhett. If there are no objections, I'd like to put together all of the minutes into one motion with no objection. Oh, I can't, my apologies. Roll call. See, you're supposed to hit me.
Mr. Estrada?
I'm here.
Mr. Moore? Mr. Perino? Mr. Rhett? Ms. Romero? Ms. Tobiasin? Mr. Freddie Williams? Pastor Williams? Mr. Mitchell Williams? Thank you.
I need a motion to approve tonight's agenda. Moved by Mr. Perino, seconded by Mr. Moore. Any discussion? All those in favor? Aye. Any opposed? Motion carries nine zero. Now, without objection, if I can get a motion to approve the meeting minutes for July 2nd, the reorg minutes of July 2nd, the regular meeting minutes of July 2nd, the board workshop minutes of July 18th, and the special meeting minutes of July 25th. Moved by Mr. Mitch Williams, seconded by Mr. Perino. Any discussion or changes to any of the minutes?
Just a question, Mr. Estrada. I was not present for the second either one, and I don't think I need to abstain. Is that correct?
Correct. You can vote on them, because they're just minutes on there, so.
Thank you.
Any other discussion? All those in favor? Aye. Any opposed? Motion carries nine zero. Moving on to our action items. First, our administrative approval of personnel memorandum 3A, number one. I need a motion.
So move.
Moved by Mr. Perino, seconded by Ms. Tobiasin. Any discussion? And for those out in the public world, these discussions do happen in executive session typically, because they are personnel memorandums. Just a regular vote, because it's not a hearing officer, there's no roll call, unless, unless the board would rather me do a roll call.
Roll call.
Yep. Okay. So there's a motion for roll call. Anybody have any objection for that? Okay. So we'll do Action Item A, Administrative Approval of Personnel Memorandum 3A, Number One, roll call.
Mr. Estrada?
Yes.
Mr. Moore?
No.
Mr. Perino?
Yes.
Mr. Rhett?
Yes.
Ms. Romero?
No.
Ms. Tobiasin?
Yes.
Mr. Freddie Williams?
No.
Pastor Williams?
Aye.
Yes.
Mr. Mitchell Williams?
No.
Motion passes.
Motion passes five to four. Moving on to instructional memorandum, approval of personnel memorandum 3B, numbers one through 12, instructional. I need a motion.
So move.
Moved by Mr. Moore, seconded by Ms. Tobiasin. Any discussion? All those in favor? Aye. Any opposed? Motion carries nine zero. I need approval for personnel memorandum 3C, numbers one through nine, non-instructional.
So move.
Moved by Mr. Perino.
Second.
Seconded by Ms. Tobiasin. Any discussion? Seeing none, those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries nine zero. I need approval for personnel memorandum 3C, numbers one through nine, non-instructional.
So move.
Moved by Mr. Perino.
Second.
Seconded by Ms. Tobiasin. Any discussion? Seeing none, those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries nine zero. Moving on to the approval of financial memorandum 3D, numbers one through three. I need a motion.
So move.
Moved by Mr. Mitchell Williams, seconded by Mr. Rhett. Any discussion? All those in favor? Aye. Any opposed? Motion carries nine zero. I need approval for Special Services Memorandum 3E, numbers one and two.
So move.
Moved by Ms. Tobiasin.
Second.
Seconded by Mr. Freddie Williams. Any discussion? All those in favor? Aye. Any opposed? Motion carries nine zero. I need approval for Change Orders 3F, Number One.
So move.
Moved by Mr. Perino.
Second.
Seconded by Mr. Rhett. Before we get into discussion, if Mr. Tuttle can give us some background on that particular change order.
Yep. This change order is over at Twin Towers Edition. Based on the site work and evaluation of it, they need to dig down a little bit further for the footings, so that the drains from the roof can go deeper, and electrical can go deeper, and the sewer lines can go deeper from the original plans, so.
Does anybody have any questions? Seeing none, those in favor? Aye. Any opposed? Motion carries nine zero. I need an approval for impartial hearing delegates, which will be myself with Mr. Mitchell Williams as the alternate. And I have to read the resolution, be it resolved at the Board of Education pursuant to 200.5 of the Regulations of the Commissioner of Education. Hereby delegates Edwin Estrada, Board President, and alternate Mitchell Williams, Board Vice President, as the representative of the Board who can appoint an impartial hearing officer in the event such a hearing is requested by the parent of a student with a disability effective for 2024-2025 school year. I need a motion.
So move.
Moved by Ms. Tobiasin, seconded by Mr. Perino. Any discussion? All those in favor? Aye. Any opposed? Motion carries nine zero. I need an approval of impartial hearing officer with a motion to approve the appointment of Vanessa Gronbach as impartial hearing officer pursuant to Part 200 of the Regulations of the Commissioner of Education for Case Number 637050. I need a motion.
So move on that.
Moved by Mr. Perino. Need a second?
Second.
Seconded by Mr. Freddie Williams. Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries nine zero. Now we'll move on to our board member recognitions and community updates. How about we start off with Mr. Freddie Williams?
Thank you. Mike was on this whole time. I should have a couple, sorry about that, should have a couple images. There you go. It Takes a Village, this is our fourth annual It Takes a Village barbecue that is happening September 7th, Saturday, September 7th, at Francher Davich Park. We have a lot of, a lot of hands involved, a lot of sponsors, the city of Middletown, Middletown Police Department, that's not it, Middletown Youth Sports, Six West Barbershop, thank you, the Mid-City Transit, the Middletown School District, and so many more. I hope to see everyone here at the, at these board tables there. Everybody here has, you know, a good, a good part of the community, and it should be great. We're, we're excited for it. It's coming up fast. It's already August, so it's weird to say that this is happening next month, but it should be great. Bring your family out, multiple activities. We're having, actually, we're creating a Facebook events page for this, so you can check that out on Facebook. Should be within this week with the listing of all the itinerary of everything we have going on. It's a lot. It's a great time.
It's a gray flyer, but you forgot to put where it is.
It was supposed to, I think it got cut off at the bottom.
Oh, okay. Good.
Yeah, this, I, that's probably my fault. I screenshot it, but yeah, it's gonna be great. We've had thousands of people come out, you know, to the last two, and even the first one was, was great, and it just keeps building. A lot of people are, you know, pouring in, and It Takes a Village, you know, it, that's exactly what it takes to pull something like this off, and, you know, it should be great. So September 7th, Saturday, September 7th, at Francher Davich Park. I wish I knew the address offhand.
130 Lake Avenue.
There you go, 130 Lake Avenue. Thank you, pastor brother. So yeah, come, come check us out. Now I'll, I'll move to the next image. This is just one shot of probably a thousand I took on Monday. This is the second week of our basketball, MIS, Middletown Youth Sports Basketball Summer League. We have about 85 kids registered. We have eight teams. A lot of fun, a lot of fun. Thank you to the Middletown Athletic Department and the Middletown School District. We are currently on Mondays, 6:00 and 7:00 p.m. at Mont Hagan, the Outdoor Courts. We have rain days also, multiple rain days in case it, you know, the weather doesn't work out, but these kids are out there working hard, they're having fun. You can probably only see one face. That's, I don't know if I picked the best picture, but it's a great time. Even parents, anybody can come out and, 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 you know, see what's going on out there. The energy is great, you know, official referees. A lot of these kids, it's their first time playing under the whistle, which means like official referees, but even the referees are awesome, because as they're reffing the game, they're, they're telling the kids, you know, they're giving them tips on what to do to kind of tutoring the kids in the game. So, and all volunteer coaches, you know, Middletown Security, we have volunteers. So it's just an awesome, awesome movement, and we appreciate it. This is our second year, and we look forward to more. So we have two more weeks, two more Mondays, if you guys want to come out and check us out. Mont Hagan, Outdoor Courts, 6:00 and 7:00 p.m. That's what I got. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Freddie Williams. We'll go back and forth. Mr. Moore?
Cool. I have just a quick couple of updates. I had opportunity, can't believe it's August already, but I had an opportunity a couple weeks ago to attend the Leadership in Education Conference in Albany, and some of the discussions were mostly geared around mostly technology, student loss, and some of that cases that we may not be experiencing, but something that I took away from it was the use of AI, and how everything is pretty much moving in that digital sense where, you know, we are immediately accessed to information at a rapid speed, and how it could actually help enhance many of our students and our scholars' opportunities to not only critically think, problem solve, and also collaborate with the use of the technology, ChatGPT and et cetera. That's tremendous amount of tools that are out there. The state actually has a unique platform where anyone can have opportunity to tune into. It's called School AI. It actually teaches the students as if they were speaking to, say, Harriet Tubman or someone of that nature. It's kind of unique, and something that hopefully everyone took the opportunity to take a look at. Other than that, mostly it really geared around communication, and how we can empower each other, although we may have differences of opinions, to be able to still communicate effectively, and be able to get our points across without having major dis, you know, major disagreements, or have situations where we are at turmoil amongst each other. It really was geared towards around that. You'd be surprised, you know, luckily here, we have a pretty good team, I could say. I've been here for maybe a month and a half. I have learned so much in that time period, but the communication has been pretty transparent, I must say that. So kudos to, you know, my fellow stakeholders, my fellow colleagues, actually. So other than that, that's really pretty much it, and I'm looking forward to the next couple of conferences that I'm signed up for, because it's definitely a learning experience. And I mean, anyone has the opportunity to do a deep dive into the New York State School Board Association, and some of their policies and the guidelines, and trust me, most of your answers are right there. So the school board doesn't govern themselves, it actually comes from the state down. Thanks.
Great. Thank you, Mr. Moore. Ms. Romero?
Ms. Brookins and the Twin Towers team have been busy planning the start of the 2024-2025 school year. The new student orientation is August 28th at 5:00 p.m. and August 30th at 9:00 a.m. Their open house is September 17th, and they are gonna be celebrating the Latino Heritage Celebration, and it's gonna take place sometime in October. That's all I have. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Mr. Perino?
President Estrada, you know, the summer is great, because you can review some of the items from the past year. It's a little, it's slightly slower, slower. Just a couple things on the graduation in June. I thought it was one of the best ceremonies ever, and I, except for the weather. It was humid weather, but, you know, you sort of expect that kind of weather in June. We've had graduations when it was, when it was raining and lightning, if it was held during the evening, so you never know. That's the, that's the sort of the odd fact of the graduations. Thought it was well-planned, and I wanted to give a shout out to the Executive Principal and Associate Principal. I think Bill's here tonight. I don't see Kathy, but she's probably around here. The physical programs were the best ever. I think they were printed at, I understand they were printed at Bosie's. The ceremony went very smoothly. The addresses were short, music was great, the selections were great, the distribution of diplomas, it was set up so it went, again, it went without a hitch, and it was, everybody cooperated to make that a success. Many people involved in that. One of the things that many people miss, Dr. Norville Connell was there, and Dr. Norville Connell is the Chair of STEM, and I just wanted to comment, I didn't, I have never seen such a great graduation gown as Dr. Connell had. The last one I saw like that was an Assistant Superintendent. We had, I believe, her name was Dr. McDonough, am I right? Remember Dr. McDonough? And the gown was two shades of blue. It was inscripted with all types of medallions, and had Latin. I said to Norville, you gotta wear that at the summer graduation. Norville, if you're listening, I said I was gonna do that, so. You look good, and you're a good man, and you're a very valuable asset to this district. The thing, the other item I'll cover, and I'm not gonna, I don't have enough time to do it, I want to talk about the Middletown Police Department's Youth Leadership Spring Program. So we'll do that, we'll start off maybe with that at the next time. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Perino. I was watching Mr. Rhett look at you intently as you were going through your report. Pastor Williams? Nothing tonight? Ms. Tobiasin?
Nothing tonight, but you forgot.
I'm sorry, Mr. Rhett.
It's all right, Mr. Estrada. Good afternoon, everyone. I think something's gonna come up on the board, but I attended this event this past Sunday, NAACP. I haven't heard from them in a while, so my, this flyer came across my desk, so I came out, and it was a nice opportunity. It had entertainment, and music, and food for the kids. They had a pamphlet table where they were just sharing information, so I came out there as well as a couple of other people that are normally active in the community. In fact, Mr. Stevenson, he was out there as well, so I don't know, we have some pictures supposed to come up, but I guess, there we go. Me and my buddy right there, it was a pretty nice event, and again, it was just nice to just see what's going on, get a little feel for what the NAACP is doing. They're looking to build their branch back up in this neighborhood. Haven't heard much about them in a while, so it was good just to mingle with parents and just, you know, have conversations, ask some questions, and, you know, get some answers as well. And the final thing, I'm excited about really trying to draw men together in schools, looking at an exploratory opportunity to create a committee, bring more dads into school. I'll talk more about that when we get into committees. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Rhett. Now, Ms. Tobiasin.
Nothing, thank you.
Okay, thank you. Mr. Mitchell Williams?
Um, yes. Just to piggyback off of what Mr. Freddie Williams was talking about as far as with It Takes a Village, the barbecue that's being done, it's the collaboration of different people, different organizations in the community. That is so important to us, and I think that's so important just to our community. So with that being said, I want to just salute and congratulate John Merchant on his camp, Building Legends Basketball Camp, which has been just going great. And with that being said, I have to thank Dave Coats and Kevin Gleason, because it's collaboration. And then a lot of the kids who are, not even kids, because they were, they were kids when, say, myself and Freddie and Kurt would train them, but now they're trainers, you know, so they're the trainers of the kids who are there, and that's just the collaboration of the give back that keeps giving back, and it's so exciting. So I also want to congratulate Middletown Youth Sports as far as with the basketball program, with, like what Freddie was just saying, where you have security guards volunteering their sign to be coaches, because they were ex-players and different things like that. As well as, we got Middletown Youth Football, they have the scrimmage coming up that's gonna be taking place on our fields, and so this is, it's all about the collaboration. So when I see this type of things, once again, I'm a father of six children, and I believe my kids are doing wonderful, and it's not just because of myself and Dr. Williams, it's definitely because of this village. It's definitely because of this village, because I have them involved in all the different types of things, and that's what built their character, built their strength, built their resilience, their independence, and everything else. It wasn't just myself, it's the village. So I truly believe in that. Also, with that being said, like right now, it's a difficult time that we're having in the country as far as with the, the death or the killing of Sonia Massey in Illinois. You know, with that, it, it makes me think about the great chief that we have, Chief Fuantu, in the Middletown Police Department. And once again, when I talk about that village, they are totally always involved as far as coming and playing different basketball with the kids, or even flag football with the kids, or even dunk me in, put me in the dunk tank for the kids, as well as having programs with mentoring the kids, having different people come in and stuff like that. And that doesn't happen in every city, it just doesn't. I've lived in a bunch of different cities, and I have not seen that, where a chief in a police department is invested in the community and making sure that we have an excellent relationship. So it just makes me be grateful of the police department that we have, as well as the people in this community, the coaches, the parents, and the kids in this community. It makes me very excited and very grateful to be a part of the Middletown community. That's it.
Mr. Estrada have something to say real quick?
Go ahead.
Mitch is very humble. He's a very intricate part in these facilities opening up, and the gyms that make it possible for like Middletown Youth Sports to train, and Building Legends to get in there, other, every really AAU basketball program, and also the Middletown Youth Football. So I want to give a hand for Mr. Mitch Williams, because he had a really big part in what's going on with these kids and these programs.
Yes, yes. We're here.
He's a humble guy, so I just had, you know, I had to give him, give him his flowers. That's it.
No, both of you do an outstanding job with our kids in the community, helping to make sure, you know, you, people don't understand that it doesn't happen when you just enter this building. That's, a lot of building goes up beforehand, so. Go ahead. this building. That's, a lot of building goes up beforehand. So, go ahead.
I forgot Miguel and Wendy, Robert and Alicia. Middletown Youth Football, like I said, Miguel been doing this 19 years.
Yep.
19 years. So, thank you.
They do a nice job. I know Mr. Rodriguez sent me a message thanking the board for allowing them to use the facility. So again, it's a partnership, you know. So a reminder that we have graduation coming up August 20th, our summer graduation at 6 o'clock at the Middletown High School Auditorium. So if board members can put that on their docket as we continue to celebrate our successful scholars here at the high school. The only thing I have is for Town of Walk Hill and Town of Wayway Yanda residents to be on the lookout. There's a lot of stuff in front of the planning boards for both towns in regards to construction and building of some commercial development. We also know, you know, I'm not going to shy away from it because it's pretty public, that the fairgrounds located between both Carter Elementary and our high school is also possibly being sold sooner or later. So just keep vigilant as residents in your areas because they do impact our school districts. Obviously, from a fairground perspective, it affects the high school and Carter Elementary. And I believe some of the sites on Route 6 and Town of Wayway Yanda, though not in our school district, does affect bus routes and things of that nature that are, are part of our particular school district. So as a community, please stay vigilant and make sure that your voice is heard moving out there.
Mr. Estrada, I'm sorry. Does anyone know, I know the Town of Walk Hill and Middletown Night Out, they're on the same night this year?
Oh, you mean the night out?
Yeah. I wanted to, because our next meeting is after that. So I just wanted to notify.
August 6th is Middletown's and Town of Walk Hill?
Yeah.
Yeah, because it's a nationwide on the same day.
Yep, yep.
So August 6th, which is next Monday, Tuesday, I'm sorry.
Right.
Is the Night Out Against Crime, I think, in all communities.
Our closest one to Town of Walk Hill and Middletown.
Yep, and they do a nice job. Both communities do an outstanding job of putting nights together. So.
Thank you.
We'll move on to our public participation. A reminder that the board will designate a portion of its meeting agenda for public comment for a period of up to 40 minutes. Each speaker will be allowed up to four minutes. The public's not permitted to discuss topics and/or matters involving specific individuals. Speakers must sign in prior to speaking and speakers are not permitted to cede their time to other speakers. And I will add, as I mentioned in our first meeting, that any inappropriate language or profane language at the microphone, this is your one and only warning, your microphone will be shut out, shut down. So with that being said, in Spanish, Ms. Romero. Thank you, Mr. Mitchell Williams.
La junta designara una parte de su agenda de reunión para comentarios públicos por un periodo de hasta cuarenta minutos. A cada persona se le permitirá hasta cuatro minutos. No se permite al público discutir temas y/o asuntos involucren a personas específicas. La persona deben registrarse y firmar antes de hablar. Las personas no pueden ceder su tiempo a otras personas.
Thank you, Ms. Romero. And our first speaker?
Turn your mic on. Okay, can you hear me? All right. Anne Marie Pendleton, thank you, Mr. Estrada. I jumped up because you were speaking on the topic that I had concern about.
And I didn't even know you were there, so.
And, you know, first, thank you to the board for always taking parent concerns. I know we haven't always agreed on everything, but I have always appreciated the time that you take with families and to hear concerns. As a parent in the district, I wanted to kind of go on record with the concerns about these mega warehouse builds. The, I live in Southgate Apartments, so we are Middletown School District and the bus routes are there even though it's right across the street from Town of Wayway Yanda. And there's a huge warehouse being built at the corner of Kirby Town and Route 6 that has 90 loading docks, 250 parking spots. That's on the smaller side. There are seven other ones that are, we know about. Some are 900,000 square feet. They're slated to be distribution centers as well. And each, you know, my concern as a parent, as a city resident, is the impact this will have on our community. They have to plan changes to the roadways expansion. And I don't think warehouses bring the character of our community any benefit, the same way that I know this board and the Town of Middletown have a commitment to local business, business owners. We see the dedication to the school district and families that comes, that's rich from those partnerships. And I know that these big corporations promise tax breaks and money to school districts. They put it right in their documents of how it will benefit the community. So I wanted to go on record as a parent saying I would not be in favor of the district taking that money because I think the long-term effects on our children, families and schools are too great. I went to the planning board meeting Wayway Yanda. It's harder in Middletown for me to find information, the public information. So I don't know what's planned for Middletown. But I will say, the impact studies did speak about using water resources from Middletown. There will be impacts from all these builds on emergency resources and response time, which affects our schools because it's some of the same emergency resources. Public services, you know, police controlling traffic are not available to help the schools. And even electric, you know, they, they pull on the utilities from Middletown. They're using Middletown utilities for some of these Wayway Yanda builds. They're 24/7 operations because they're distribution sites. So the effects on scholars could be great. That's noise all night long. Light, you know, the security lights, the lights of the operations, the semi trucks constantly moving. And so there seem to be a lot of long-term effects that could happen as well as people moving out of the area, property values going down while taxes go up. So, you know, I feel that the school boards are community leaders that can help preserve the rich culture of a community and think of the best interests of the families and needs of our community. And I'm hoping that you'll support that as well. And I'd like to ask you, consider sending a letter to the surrounding town planning boards and there's other boards involved in approving all of these proposals, just requesting enough time to review the plans and how they'll affect Middletown's school districts. Thank you.
Thank you very much. And out of respect, you're Dr. Pendleton, right? Okay, just wanted to make sure. So, yep. And we did receive a, a letter from Dr. Pendleton that, that we have forwarded on to our superintendent and she's doing some background work on that information. And then she'll advise the board on some of the information that we have. And we do have active, not participation, but we do look at other municipalities like the City of Middletown and the Town of Walk Hill. Not as much with the Town of Wayway Yanda, unfortunately. And their master plans, unfortunately, sometimes don't include us, which they should, because typically their master plans revolve around building around Middletown, directly around Middletown, precisely for water and things of that nature. So it does impact our community and I think it's important to.
But I also think, I think within a five mile radius, which would include residents from the City of Middletown, we're not notified about that public hearing. And that definitely will have an effect on all of us. So thank you for addressing that situation.
Thank you. Any other speakers?
Good evening, Mrs. Adoma, President Estrada, Mr. Williams, members of the board and district administration. My name's Kevin Witt. I am an employee here in the Communications Department. I'm also a resident in the City of Middletown. And I didn't, wasn't going to speak. I was kind of 50/50 and I was inspired by all of your comments about the great things that are going on here. And one of the things I like to do from time to time is just randomly check like the real estate listings, just to see kind of what's going on. And I, I've had this in my brain and like nobody to share it with. And now I feel like I finally have my place here, that I can do that, is I was looking through the listings and I saw one of the homes in town and it had its whole thing going. And then it said, Middletown Schools. Now, how long have we wanted that as a selling point? And we've been trying to tell people for years that this is the place you want to be. And we were constantly stigmatized for whatever reason. And I just saw that and I was like, wow, we have waited so long. And it was one listing. There's probably more. But I just wanted to share that with you folks because y'all had a lot to do with it. Whether you've been here a long time or not a long time, we've all fought that. And I just, this was the first time I'd ever seen that they were advertising it as Middletown Schools. So thank you for listening for that. And I just wanted to, to comment on, on what you had said. The City of Middletown Planning Board meets on the first Wednesday of every month at 7:00. And they'll have a listing of everything that they're going to talk about, but it's also not so, pardon my back, I'm sorry. It's, it's not so large that you cannot approach, if you don't have a chance to speak during the meeting, it's not so large that you cannot address the chair at some point and I'm sure they'll help you. Okay? Thank you, everybody.
Thank you, Mr. Rett.
It's going to be devastating.
Any others would like to come up for public comment? Seeing none, we'll move on to our next agenda item, our superintendent updates. Do we have any letters?
No.
And usually, folks, if we do get letters, they are posted and available on board docs as well. But thank you for reminding me. Ms. Adoma, it's all yours.
Thank you, President Estrada. So we have a few presentations tonight. Our first presentation is on our food and nutrition highlight. We want to, so for the past two years, we've offered a culinary camp. So this year, we want to thank Snap Ed for the continued partnership. So I'm going to have Lauren Burr, our Director of Food and Nutrition Services, and Erica, sorry Erica, because I know we've met all the time, Erica Dahl from Snap Ed to share what we've done this year of the culinary camp.
President Estrada, Vice President Williams, Mrs. Adoma and members of the Board of Education, we're here tonight to proudly present our second year of Culinary Camp. However, before I get started, I would like to read a brief statement about our Boars Head Cold Cuts. Effective today, August 1st, the enlarged City School District of Middletown will not be serving Boars Head Cold Cuts until further notice. This comes after a recommendation from the Orange County Department of Health due to a recall of Boars Head products. Here at Middletown, the safety and well-being of our students, staff and community continues to be of primary importance. So as Ms. Adoma mentioned, I'm here today with Ms. Erica Dahl. She is the Special Projects Coordinator at Snap Ed. And we're here today to present about our second year of our Culinary Camp.
So I was struck as Mr. Williams and Mr. Williams were talking about, yeah, right? This is fantastic.
If you're going to make a mistake, just, if you're going to make a mistake, just say Williams. You're bound to be, you know.
There we go. Love it. So I was, I was struck as the Williamses were speaking and just carrying through with some themes with, it takes a village and strength and independence and resilience. And I, I wanted to carry those themes as we talk about what Culinary Kids has been for me in the Middletown School District the past two years. So what Culinary Kids is, is a partnership between Snap Ed, which is a program of Cornell Cooperative Extension, and the school district, offering students a week-long immersive program which focuses on food and nutrition, covering the journey from farm to kitchen to table. All right. And as this year, we were in a music classroom. I was struck with some lyrics. I don't know much about history, right? So this is our second summer doing it. Each summer, we've had two cohorts, each one week long. Our first week is always the little guys, our second through fourth graders. The second week is always our older kiddos, which is our middle schoolers, fifth through seventh grade. And there's usually about 10 to 15 kids per cohort, although we allow up to 20 fills up. We usually end up with 10 to 15 kids. I will tell you that although when this program started, we sort of thought it would be a bigger hit with the little guys. It's that, it's that older group that we really feel like it lands better with. And the first year, we opened up and it was all seventh graders. And I asked the first day, I said, to our group of seventh graders, do you cook at home, right? Do you like to cook at home? And one of the seventh graders said, yeah, I love to cook at home. I said, well, what do you like to cook, right? And I, you know, what do you expect seventh graders to say? So I will, I will ask the board, what would you expect some of your seventh graders to say? Mac and cheese?
Nuggets.
Nuggets, right? So when my kiddo in the back of the room said ribs, I said, excuse me, sir. Right? Tell me everything, right? So I listened a little bit more and what he said was, I make ribs. I cook for my siblings all the time. And I said, do you shop? And he said, yes, I shop, but I do a little bit better at the beginning of the month when the EBT hits. And that is when Lauren and I sat down and we said, we need to rethink this camp, right? Strength, resilience, independence. Culinary camp then shifted. We looked at our recipes. We looked at our systems and we changed the camp a little bit. So we will talk to you about the features of Culinary Camp and how we upgraded this year. So we do have some nutrition education through Snap Ed. We have hands-on cooking demonstrations for of the five days of the camp. We do have a local farm visit to Sycamore Farms, which is within your school district, right down to 11. And we bring in community partners. It takes a village, right? So we have our Cornell Cooperative Extension Master Gardeners come in, which you'll see photos of. We have 4H volunteers come in and talk about composting. And we have Cornell Cooperative Extension mindfulness programming come in. And our Market Sprouts Market, which is kind of our crown jewel, and we'll show you that at the end. And Lauren will chat with you about how we grew Culinary Camp this year and shifted some things.
So firstly, I do want to speak about our executive chefs that we do have on staff. So what we figured out last year was the culinary piece, the cooking piece was actually held in the classroom. So we were a little limited on the recipes that we could have the kids have hands-on access to. And we wanted to show them basic skills. So these two gentlemen really helped, like helped lead that effort. So we took the kids into the kitchen and I'm hoping, yes. So here's the picture. So on the right-hand side here, you see Chef John. And we actually showed them like basics, just how do you boil a pot of water? How do you cook rice? How do you cook pasta? So from start to finish, they knew how to produce. We did a, I think it was a summer rice and a summer pasta salad on that day. We talked about food safety, basics of how to hold a knife. So how to hold a knife, how to cut produce. And if you have round produce, cutting the edge off so it lays flat on your cutting board. So all the way from the basic skills up to creating the recipes. Something else we had new this year. So we had a lot of classroom support from Ms. Liz Reed. Immense help. She had classroom activities for the kids. We had mindfulness in the morning. We had journals. So huge shout out and, and thanks to her. She was really an incredible help for us to kick off our second year of this. And one of my favorites, so here in the district, we developed a nutrition scavenger hunt. So if you've been in the building, when I host this scavenger hunt, you will see all kinds of crazy arrows all over the place pointing these students into the directions of where they can find the various fruits or vegetables. At the end of the scavenger hunt, they have a little game board. They're able to mark it with stickers. They find out fun facts of all the fruit or vegetables. So here in this first picture on the left, you actually see the image of the game board. And another component that we brought into the classroom this year is after the scavenger hunt, all of the fruit and vegetables that we featured, they were able to taste and give us some feedback on. So that was a nice addition this year as well.
One of the things that we upgraded this year was our nutrition curricula. We changed it to be more trauma-informed and we made darn sure that our nutritionists were bilingual, that we brought into the classroom with kids and multicultural. So you can see, we always get asked, what's trauma-informed nutrition curricula? So these are some of the questions we asked right off the bat. What are your favorite foods? We want to know about the flavors that they're eating in their home. We ask them to show us what they already knew, right? What does food nutrition look like? "What does food and nutrition look like in your house?" This is one of my favorites. "What are your goals?" My goal is, my goal I have is eating vegetables. Right? And not to brag, but we are really, really good at accomplishing this goal in a lot of different ways, right? And I'm gonna brag about Lauren, she didn't make this slide, I did, I promise. You're Food Service Director. I get the privilege of working at a lot of schools in the Hudson Valley, and I haven't brought another Food Service Director to a farm before. Right? I get a lot of other folks from the district, but the director never comes with me. Neither does her assistant. They certainly don't get in the big yellow school bus with us and drive out and hoof it through the mud. But yours do. So I would just like to brag on them a little bit, because they don't brag enough on themselves. So, your team is phenomenal. These are some of our Master Gardeners and 4-H. They talked about composting. They talked about processed food versus unprocessed food. This year, I'm not sure what happened to our slides here, but what's the buzz about? You can see your kiddos in the bee suits, and we chatted a little bit about what that looks like and what that means to the food system. Mindfulness. "My body feels heavy a little and tired, but I'm ready to take on the rest of the day." Right? We talked about what your body feels like when you eat food. And the Sycamore Farms visit. So Farmer Kevin, if you don't know him, this is his family's farm, right on 211. Before he took over his family's farm, he was an elementary school teacher. Both years, he's walked both cohorts, so four cohorts of children around his family's farm. This is what some of those days have looked like. This year, we had one rainy day and we had one 90-something degree day. And the kids love it. They are super engaged, they are super involved. He has a peach and nectarine orchard on his farm. They see produce they have never seen before. They tried okra flower petals. They were in the zucchini fields. They, I'm gonna go back a slide just to point something out. In her hand, she has a midnight Roma tomato, which is a purple tomato. None of us had ever seen one of those before. It was very cool. Whether they're interested in food photography, whether, it doesn't matter. It was very, very cool. This is some of the student commentary. "I like that I can decide what I get to add and make it taste the way I like it. I cook for my sisters and brothers at home, and this class gave me some new ideas. I can't believe we get to shop for our own vegetables," and we'll get to that in a second. "I didn't know some of these fruits and vegetables even existed." One kiddo found out he was allergic to peaches. It was the first time he'd eaten a peach. Some feedback from the youth. We survey them, right? So 86% of students were more willing to try new foods at the end of the program. 100% of students were aware that they should be physically active for at least 60 minutes per day. At the end of the program, 100% of students could identify the specific body systems that would be positively impacted by eating fruits and vegetables. And the final day is our Market Sprouts Market. So the kids walk in to find their classroom transformed into a farmer's market. Farmer's Market is designed just for them, where they can shop for produce to bring home using Market Sprouts bucks. The produce is donated by Snap Ed Partners, and it's free for participants. The produce corresponds to the workshops and the Snap Ed recipes taught during camp. They get shopping autonomy. They're practicing real-world skills. It's fun, it's exciting. I like this one because the big kids are on the left and the little kids are on the right, and there's no difference. It gets students involved in their nutrition decisions. If they're growing it, if they're cooking with it, if they're shopping for it, they are eating it. And it gets the healthy food into the lineup at home. When we're talking to the kids, when we're having them journal, they're all telling us they are proud. They're proud that they are able to shop. They're proud they are able to cook. They are proud that they are able to use these skills. The recipes that we're sending home with them are being sent home in English and Spanish. They know how to cook them already. They have the produce in their bags. They have some cooking instruments that they've used that they get to bring home with them. Everything's available, again, in English and Spanish. Any recipe that we have a YouTube video for, there's a QR code that they can scan it, so it eliminates any literacy issues as well. We try to make as many items available as we can at the market so that they don't go home and not have something to cook it. And, since this was a pilot program that we did here at Middletown, it's gotten some press and excitement around the state. We're trying to scale Market Sprouts around New York State because of what happened here at Middletown last year. And we would love it if you would join the fun. So I don't know if there's a way to click this or not.
I think, so we have a little video that we would like to show that kind of summarizes the week at a glance, or the two weeks at a glance.
I don't know if it worked though. Let me see if I can click it. It's less than a minute. Let me click it. Hang on, why did that stop?
I think they have it also downstairs to queue up. Yep.
They got it downstairs.
There it is.
Awesome. Thank you very much.
Nice job, Lauren.
Thank you so much.
We'll go around the table. If anybody has any questions, we'll start, Mr. Moore? You're good? Mr. Freddie Williams?
A comment. This is the second year, you said? This is awesome. This program, I'm just thinking, my son thinks he's a chef, so it had me thinking about him. This is awesome. The districts, surrounding districts have this also?
Not that I'm aware of at this time.
Yeah, because I don't remember hearing anything like this. This is, I just want to commend you guys. This is awesome. I think that you're gonna have to expand that 15 to 20. I think it's gonna grow in a big fashion. So, thank you.
Mr. Perino?
Yeah. I think this is a, as Freddie said, I think this is a great program. And I have, additionally, I have great respect for your department. You do a lot of good things in your department. And I know that during the year and during the summer, you take into consideration any students that have allergies or special needs, and you're aware of that. Another good point here, I firmly believe that a number of these students have probably never been on a farm. So to get the kids in the, in a farming situation, this used to be a big farm area at one time. There actually was a working farm, if you know where the Salvation Army is on 211. It started there and went well past ShopRite, a number of acres with Smith's Farm. So it was not only a dairy farm, but also a vegetable farm. So, good job on this, and excellent to expose students to different situations that they may not have been in and healthy foods. A recommendation, why don't you start a cooking class for adults who can't cook right now? But nice job, really.
Thank you, Mr. Perino. Mr. Romero?
I commend your collaboration. Great job, ladies.
Thank you, Mr. Rett. This time I didn't forget you.
No, again, I agree. This is just very special. You know, I like the idea that y'all make it engaging and fun, and it's educational, you know? You know, they have opportunities to make some healthy, alternative choices. A lot of these children are really educating their parents on some of these healthy alternatives, you know? So, you know, we know also that, you know, when you want to eat healthy, you know, it's gonna cost you a little bit. But at the end of the day, it's, you know, it's best for, we know, for overall health is something that's really good. And I commend you guys for, you know, taking the time. And I think he's talked about a quick minute, you had to pivot and make another decision because based on how the kids were receiving the information. That's real good learning. Thank you for sharing.
Mr. Byson?
I think that as teachers, and that sometimes we don't realize the impact that we have on the students that are sitting in front of us. And it might not be tomorrow, it might be next year, or it might be 10 years from now. But there are memories there that those students who participated will remember and share, either with family, siblings, or other friends. So thank you very much for what you've inspired in these children.
Mr. Mitchell Williams?
Yeah, just to piggyback on my colleagues as far as just, we're very thankful to what you're doing. And it's very impressive, because I want to commend you on just making the adjustments when you saw the different needs of the kids. You know, people talk about diversity, equity, and inclusion, but they, some people just talk about it. You know, the reality is, the Black and Latino community, we deal with an obesity problem. That's just the reality of it. So we need to start learning how to eat healthy from a young age. And I see that this is what you're teaching, this is what you're instilling and showing, and also learning how to shop. You know, this is how you shop, how you shop, bargain. The next thing is, like, as coaches, we, as coaches, we try to... Alright, so we'll teach somebody basketball, but at the same time, we're trying to teach them discipline. We're trying to teach them resilience. We're trying to teach them life lessons and different things like that. And I see that's exactly what you're doing as well, when you said it's being trauma-informed, as far as being mindful. You know, so it's just more than just cooking. And it's definitely a part of the village, a big piece of this village to keep our kids and our families healthy. And I thank you and commend you.
Yeah, I want to piggyback on what everybody's already said. I'm fortunate enough to sit on the board for Cornell Cooperative. It's a tremendous organization. This is their expertise, you know, it's programs like this. And being able to sit on their board, I think helps me bring to them the realities of a place like Middletown, or a place like Newburgh, let's say. And that's why what you mentioned, Mitch, was so important about how you guys were able to pivot when you found out about the EBT and stuff like that. It's a different reality for our student population. You know, throughout your presentation about, you know, this isn't fun for some of these kids. This is a job for some of these kids at home. Why? Because their parents are working, you know? So they are cooking for their siblings at a young age, many of them. You know, so whereas, you know, in some other school districts, they may be fortunate enough where this becomes like a hobby, as opposed to a necessity. For our students, it's necessary. So learning the life lesson of how to cook early, how to cook healthy early. How, you know, we made a comment while the presentation was being done about how to pay for it. You know, how it's important. Mr. Romero is very important in financial literacy within the school district. Well, how to buy food and how much you get per serving is very important. So, I commend you. I want to thank you. I want to thank Cornell Cooperative and all the folks there, as well as part of the Snap Ed program, for continuing to include our school district in a lot of their programs. So thank you. Next up, Mrs. Adoma.
Alright, thank you again. 95% of our US teenagers have access to smartphones. The impact of cell phones on learning continues to be a topic of discussion as we are starting to see more districts and some states placing restrictions on cellphone use in the classroom. There are numerous research studies that show the negative effects of cell phones on mental health and learning. During the 2022-2023 school year, we began requiring scholars to place their phones in yonder pouches here at Middletown High School. After nearly a year and a half of implementation, we have had the opportunity to refine our system. Even more important, we have seen our scholars more engaged in the classroom and increased interactions with their peers as a result of the shift. Given these gains, this school year will be implementing the use of the yonder pouches at the middle school level. So this evening, we have Mrs. Nicole Brookins from Twin Towers, Principal Twin Towers, there you go, Principal Twin Towers Middle School, Mr. Dominic Redonia, Principal of Monhegan Middle School, and Mr. William Donahue, Executive Principal here at Middletown High School. And they're here to share with us information about the Yonder Pouch Program.
And Billy, before you start, I just want to let folks know that both Pastor Williams and Freddie Williams did have other commitments tonight, so I want to thank you for coming out today. But I know they have to leave, so, but go ahead.
Alright, so, good evening, President Estrada, Vice President Williams, members of the board, members of the Middletown School community, Ms. Adoma. I don't think I left anybody else out. So I'm happy to be here tonight to just talk a little bit about our Yonder Program. As Ms. Adoma said, we're entering our second full year of implementation at the high school. But this will be new for our incoming freshmen, as well as scholars in both middle schools. So we're here tonight to just provide really a high-level overview of some of the rationale, talk about how the program will work, and most importantly, share information about our upcoming informational series that we encourage all with questions to come to. At various points throughout the program, I'll be talking about some of the insight, but there's no way in the short presentation that I will cover the comprehensive program, or questions rather, that many of our families will have. So again, just want to reiterate, if you have any questions, we have multiple opportunities for town halls, both virtually and in person, and we urge all to attend. When we first implemented at the high school, we had meetings last three hours. And we were happy to do it because those three hours were driven by concerns, questions, and led to a really nice dialogue and collaboration at the end of it. So again, if you have any questions at the conclusion, please show up and we'd love to speak with you. So, we can go into this... Oh, thank you. Alright. Thank you. Alright, so, obviously, I'm Billy Donahue, Executive Principal. Ms. Brookins behind me from Twin, Mr. Redonia behind me from Monhegan, and Ms. Adoma obviously spoke. We're gonna start with just a brief video that really kind of highlights the implementation. It's not our school, but it's another school that did use Yonder with some of the positive effects as a result of the implementation of the program. So we can play that video? This is not controlled by me.
Ask a teacher, they'll tell you cell phones are still an issue and a big classroom distraction.
And now thousands of schools around the country, including right here in the metro, are taking back those classrooms with a small cellphone pouch.
Today, 95% of teens have access to a smartphone, and 45% self-report that they're online almost constantly. Smartphones have penetrated all aspects of daily life, but of special concern to educators is their prevalence in schools. The average kid gets their first smartphone at age 10. That's 5th grade. Most will open their first social media account within the next few years. But some schools are beginning to question the wisdom of allowing kids to enter the classroom with tiny computers and social networks in their pockets. These concerns, along with a general annoyance at phone-gazing concert-goers, led 32-year-old Graham Dugoni to build a device called Yonder. Users drop their phone in, the pouch locks, and can only be reopened with a large magnet.
Come in through the door, and you open the pouch.
Get our phone out, make sure it's powered off, on airplane mode, all that.
Put your phone inside, and you close it, and throughout the day, you can't open it.
For me at first, I didn't really like it.
Poach? Seriously?
I barely came to the school. They just started doing a Yonder thing. And I was like, oh my, why?
Everyone was realizing that they weren't actually getting any work done, and like, their schoolwork was like declining because of the phone.
So this is phone usage per day before Yonder. How many messages did you get? How many times did you check social media? How many hours did you spend on your phone?
How would you describe these numbers?
Big. Surprising.
Excessive.
A little too much.
Remember like sophomore year, I tried to get my followers up like every day, just check my followers constantly.
You're just constantly...
You're just constantly comparing yourself to other women on your feed, and it definitely takes a toll on your self-image.
I got more focused and worried, um, my grades went up.
I was sitting alone, and I saw this other kid across from me who was also sitting alone, and can't pull out my phone, so I went up to them and I introduced myself, and I actually met someone new.
Three days later, I was just like, what are we learning today? Cause I, I can't even open it.
Less distracted and honestly happier, kind of, because they're not worrying about what's going on in social media.
Interacting way more, like, instead of being on their phones and having earbuds in and not interacting with people, a lot of people are interacting with people, getting to know other people.
The atmosphere has seemed more positive. I'm always used to having it right here, not having it for eight hours throughout the day, it, it changes, changes you.
Amazing moment happened with him.
We, we can stop the video there.
Everybody who was there, all pulled out their phones and were filming.
Alright, just let me know when we're back on the uh, thank you. So while we're getting uh, getting set up back so I can control it, just, I just want to say like, that video is really accurate in the sense that, that those were actual scholars, and that is actually a lot of the feedback that we received and, and some of the effects that we saw. Um, so if you look at this, and, and a lot of this information is from 2007, sixteen years later, I will tell you that it has not gotten better. Um, we know, and research shows, um, that cellphone use, uh, overuse has contributed, um, to reports of sleeping interruptions, um, and up taking the diagnosis and treatment of teenagers with stress and anxiety-related conditions, um, disengagement, disengagement not only from instruction, but from other scholars and social interactions, um, and an increase in the number of teenagers diagnosed and being treated for depression, or reporting feeling isolated or alone. Some of the impacts, as measured by schools that adopted the Yonder Program, we saw sixty-five percent of schools saw an improvement in academic performance, seventy-four percent improvement in student behavior, and eighty-three percent saw an improvement in student engagement in the classroom. Ninety-four percent of the teachers identified more teaching and learning time, and I will tell you, um, that feedback and, and those statistics are consistent with our implementation at the high school. Um, I just want to say too, just very quickly in designing the policy and how it went, I'm a parent of two teenagers, well, one's almost a teenager, two kids with cell phones. I acknowledge that the easiest way for me to get in touch is to text them directly, if I have a change in plans. I also acknowledge that one of my biggest concerns in implementing this was, I need the school to tell me how I'm going to get in touch with my young person if there's an emergency. And so, in designing the policy, and again, we'll speak more about that at the town halls, all of the various protocols, procedures, feedback we listen to, and changes we made in implementing this policy. And if there's something we missed at the town halls, please bring it to our attention. We will continue to craft uh, this policy to meet the expectation, but I will tell you, when you walk through the halls and you go into the cafeteria and you see kids talking, I grew up, I graduated in nineteen ninety-seven, right, and a lot of people like to talk about when they grew up, but one of the biggest benefits of growing up in that time period is I had no choice. I had to socialize, and then some of the greatest experiences I had were from those interactions. We don't take this lightly. You know, certainly, taking phones away from, from young people during the school day, for them feels like a tremendous lift, but they get used to it. We do have safe spaces, we'll talk about that later in the presentation, but again, if you have any questions or concerns, at the end of the slide, we'll have town halls, we look forward to seeing you. So, I turn it over to Ms. Brookins.
Good evening, everyone.
Good evening.
And so, to continue on, since the high school has taken the lead with Yonder, their implement- implementation date will be different from the middle school. So, they're going to start day one. Uh, most of their students have already become familiar with Yonder, they're comfortable with Yonder, and they'll just work on their freshmen to get them up to speed. For the middle schools, we will be using this time to start September twenty-third. Our scholars need some time to get used to this idea, for us to explain the importance of being phone-free in the schools, and all that they can accomplish without their phone right there, ready for them at their every whim. And so, we will take that time to do that and to also partner with our families and our parents to ensure that they are comfortable as well with this new approach that we're going to be taking with our phones. So, we have a start date of September twenty-third. Every single scholar is given a pouch, a pouch that belongs to them, uh, and so they will be responsible for bringing that pouch to and from school. They will be asked to present their pouch upon arrival to ensure that their phone is stored away safely. And so, at the entrances, there will be staff members who will greet them and guide them throughout the process of ensuring that their phone is safely tucked away in their Yonder pouch, and then they'll be able to keep their Yonder pouch on their person, put it in their locker, put it in their school bag, but they will not have access to it until the end of the day. And so, at dismissal, we'll have some magnetic bases close to the areas of exit for our scholars to use in order to unlock the device to be able to bring their phones out and continue on with their day. That is what will happen for most of our scholars. However, if there is an opportunity that they need to use their phone during the day, Mr. Redonia is going to take us through that process, as well as what would happen if the pouch needs to be replaced.
Thank you, Ms. Brookins. Uh, I will say that although this is going to be a very big change at the middle school level, um, we do have a little bit of an advantage. Uh, Mr. Donahue, um, has spent quite a bit of time, him, he and his team spent quite a bit of time with the two middle school teams, where we have been able to sit down and really talk to them about their year and a half experience. What has worked for you guys at the high school? You know, what did you struggle with? What adjustments did you have to make? They didn't really have that opportunity, or at least not as easily accessible as we do, so we've been able to sit down with them and really talk about the process that they've gone through over the last year and a half, and we've heard some really great things from them to help us with our implementation of the middle school. So, we're going to adopt the same replacement process that they have at the high school. If a pouch is lost by a student, every student's going to get a pouch. If their pouch is lost or damaged beyond repair, um, the first time that happens, we're going to replace the pouch at no cost to a student. Um, we have, technology has worked with us, um, to formulate a document where we can easily track every child and which, how many pouches they have had, whether it's one, two, three, or so forth. Um, if a second pouch is given to a student, a replacement pouch, and that is either lost or damaged beyond repair, a third pouch would be given to the child, but at a cost of twenty dollars, which by the way, does not even, um, cover the cost of a, a pouch. A pouch is more expensive than the twenty dollars. Um, so that's kind of what we're going to do based on what has worked at the high school, um, and we're going to do that now at the middle school as well. We're also going to designate safe spaces, which is a really important piece of this. Uh, in addition to having the opportunity to collaborate with the high school, we've also had the opportunity to sit down with the Yonder representatives, and they've talked to us about what works, what their expectations are, what their intentions are. We've done walkthroughs in our buildings, in the Twin Towers and at Monhegan Middle School, say, hey, this is what we're thinking of, how does this work? Give us some feedback on the space, how do you envision this? This is what we're thinking. And so, we've had all these opportunities already this summer that have really benefited us. And so, the idea of the safe spaces are a couple different things. Um, if somebody needs to contact their young person, we've always in our schools, definitely both the middle schools, have had the, the, the protocol where, call the school, call the school, we will get your child for you, we'll bring them down to the office, and you'll have that opportunity to, to talk to your child. It's never a problem, we know that there's family emergencies that arise, and, you know, we'll support you in that nature, even if it's something as simple as, hey, I'm not going to pick you up today, jump on the bus. We'll get that message to your child. Um, if your child needs to call a family member during the course of the day, that's where the safe spaces come in. So, we're going to have, um, the main office, the principal's office, um, and both dean's offices will have, uh, the magnetic device where students can come down there with a pass, so their teacher knows where they are and they're accounted for, and we can unlock the device, and they can utilize their phone in those spaces, even in the middle of the day. And the reason for that is because sometimes, if you need to call mom, you need to call dad or, or a family member. Uh, I know, in my case, I have a lot of my family members as contacts, and it might just say their name, I don't actually know their number. So, we can't just always tell a child to go to the, the courtesy phone and make the call, they might not know the number. So, we want to have these safe spaces available where they can come down, use the, the phone in a, in a supervised, uh, way where we know they're not, not jumping on social media, but in fact, they're making a phone call to their family members, uh, because that's something that they need to do. Might just be like, hey, I'm going to chess club today, so I'm not going to be coming home on the two fifteen bus, you know, or can I go to chess club today? Um, so that's an important piece of communication that, that they'll be allowed to engage in as well. If there's an emergency in the school, uh, you know, Mr. Donahue brought that up, I will say, one of the, the, one of the many great things about Middletown is, anytime there's been an emergency in, in the, in the schools, um, you know, Kevin is always on site, he's one of the first people there, uh, along with Ms. Adoma and, and our, our central administration, Mr. Tuttle, everybody, everybody's there. And I think we do a really effective job of putting out information to our community in a very timely manner. Uh, we make sure we have all the information first, and then it gets put out on our website and, you know, any other means necessary, so we can inform our families in a timely manner. That will always continue, Yonder Pouches or not. Um, we talked about the safe spaces a little bit. Although the high school has done this before, they're still going to have some information sessions, because people may have different questions based on the year and a half of experiences, so they're going to have a, a combination of in-person and virtual meetings, as you see on this, uh, document here on the slide. Uh, middle school will also have uh, several informational sessions. August seventh, which is next Wednesday, it's going to be in-person at Monhegan Middle School, and that is for both Monhegan and Twin Towers families. They're both welcome to come into the building. Um, we're going to, the two teams, the two middle school teams are going to be together to present, to answer questions, and talk with our families.
Just Mr. Redonia, just, uh, a point of information for our families, the reason why Twin does not have its own separate, it's under construction right now, so.
Right.
Um, that's why we're utilizing Monhegan.
Yeah, and we wanted to make sure, thank you for saying that. We wanted to make sure that, that both schools and both sets of, of, uh, learning communities have the same opportunity to ask questions and get the information in the same timeframe. Um, on August eighth, both middle school teams will work together for a virtual presentation at noon. We're trying to vary the times, because everybody's on a different work schedule, so we try to be cognizant of that and, uh, respectful to everybody, uh, and their timeframes that, that are good for them. So, on August eighth, we'll send out, uh, that morning, we'll send out a link, uh, and have a virtual meeting on the twelfth. Uh, then on August twenty-sixth, we'll do another in-person meeting at five-thirty at night. Again, we try to adjust the time to try and meet everybody's needs, and it'll, it'll be both buildings again, uh, at Monhegan. And then September ninth, after school starts, we will do one more virtual, uh, presentation before we implement on the twenty-third. And, you know, what's really important about what Ms. Brookins has said, you know, we're not starting on day one. That was something we talked about quite a bit, uh, was a very intentional decision. This is new for eight to nine hundred kids in both buildings, so we thought it was really important not only to communicate why this is such an important venture, um, but also to make sure that our kids are comfortable and understand the entry process that's going to occur in both buildings, what to expect, how to open and close the, the pouch, and get all the intricacies down so that it's an easier transition for them. So, we'll spend that first couple of weeks really working not only with our families, um, but with our kids as well, so that they feel comfortable and it's not, you know, a huge transition for them. I mean, it'll be a huge transition, but maybe just a little bit easier. Although we will be meeting with families, uh, as Mr. Donahue said, we are welcoming you to reach out to us at any point in time. Um, this is the information for the, the high school team, you have both the, uh, executive and associate principals right here, their phone numbers and email address, and then we also have the house principals, each cohort and house principal, um, and their team's information as well. So, you can reach out to any of the following people, if you're the parent of a high school student. And here's the information of the two middle school teams. Um, we have the Twin Towers team to the right, we have the Monhegan team to the left with, and we have Ms. Hodler, Ms. Lebron here with us, so thank you guys for coming as well. Um, so please reach out to us, ask any questions. We're hoping that people come out to those informational sessions and, and ask important questions, uh, and bring up, you know, things that you're thinking about, so maybe we thought about them and have answers, and maybe we haven't thought about them, and have to really sit down and, and talk about those and, and do the best we can for our kids to, to create the safest and, uh, you know, most effective learning environment possible. Well, I think that's it. Thank you, guys.
We'll go around the table, we'll start off with Mr. Mitchell Williams this time.
Um, you know, just as speaking as a parent of, you know, just knowing my, knowing your kids and stuff like that, um, is it possible that you can buy like, three Yonder pouches ahead of time, cause you know your kids lose stuff? I had one of my kids, I know they lose, they would have lost three. My son, I love him to death.
Are you looking for a discount?
I mean, it's three for fifty, I mean, but we got to be honest with our kids, we know our kids.
Yeah.
And so, it's possible for somebody to do that and, uh, buy it ahead of time?
We, we've been really, I mean, obviously, we, we have, uh, we don't have an unlimited supply, but, but certainly that's something we might have to think about. I mean, I would have been one of those kids too, trust me. Um, and we've been, we've been pretty good about working with, I, I mean, I had a whole, I call them day pouch, like, uh, you could use it for the day. I had a whole supply of those, I'd have a, I'd have a, a group of young men specifically that, that just, every day is the same thing, and they borrow my day pouches and return them at the end of the day, you know, well, as it's new and as it's implemented as teenagers are teenagers, you know, we have to adjust and, and do what we need to do to make, make the program successful, but I'll stand on the fact, um, the benefits are so, I mean, it's a lot of work, you can imagine. For those that have teenagers, how many times you have to tell them, don't bring that out at the table, don't bring that out here, don't bring that out there. It's just a constant thing, because it's so a part of their life, and it's so a part of their social activity, it's so a part of everything they do, that it's really hard to get them to understand the benefits, but also the nature of teenagers, a lot of time, they think very short-sighted. They're thinking about today, or they're thinking about the week ahead, and they're not necessarily thinking or understanding what they lose, walking through the halls with their heads down, earbuds in, missing opportunities to connect in the cafeteria, and certainly what happens in the classroom. I left the classroom in twenty seventeen, and not to toot my own horn, I think I'm a pretty engaging speaker, but by the end of my career in teaching, I, I realized that those phones were coming out way more than nothing I said. I used to show one movie all year, it used to be a big deal in my class. By the end, I had to stop multiple times, because those phones just, you know, the alerts are going off, everything else, and they're designed that way. And again, I don't want to get in a soapbox and talk about this, but, you know, the way those things are, are kind of designed, they are designed to hook people into looking at them. Um, and that becomes very hard to compete with, the costs are too great, so, so I'm very happy that we have undertaken this.
So, my question, one of my questions is, are we, uh, tracking data to measure the success of our, cause I saw the data that Yonder is using, but are we in Middletown tracking our data to see the success?
The success of implementation, or just tying it to, um, we really want to do a deep dive now two years in, uh, and kind of match up, because it's hard to say, when you look at that and you see, let's say you see a decrease in, in behavioral incidents, you know, what's that connected to? We can certainly tie some previous behavioral incidents and measure, um, but a lot of that's going to come from the young people, and they're, they're open and honest. They'll talk about the benefits, just like they did in that video, they'll tell you. I didn't like the policy, but really, you know, I, I'm paying attention more, I, it's, it's nice to talk to other young people. But there's certainly multiple things, like measuring the impacts positively on grades, um, you know, certainly those are, those are things now with, again, two years worth of information to take a look at, and then take a look at what preceded that, to really see if there's, um, the benefits that we're looking for as well, and the numbers we're looking for.
So, once again, I just, um, excellent work, just excellent presentation. Um, with
me being a substance use clinician, you know, instant gratification is not my friend, so I think this is a great thing, you know, because it's teaching our kids how to cope, how to deal, and, um, how to stay focused and disciplined, things that we just got finished talking about, so excellent job.
I think Ms. Adoma wanted to add.
Not yet. I was going to say that we, that's something we can look into to see there's a way to mimic the survey that was done, so this, we haven't.
Yes.
Mr. Tobias then.
Nothing, I'm just, you know, very supportive. I know that it's been a traumatic experience for many parents, you know, moving on and having.
Having, not available, but I think the points that are made this evening emphasizes that you can still get in touch with your students or your child, and the impact. I too would be very interested to see academic achievement, if there's a significant contrast between, let's say, two years back and the next year.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Ms. Romero. Mr. Rat.
Uh, yes. I applaud you guys and, um, your presentation. I was in the school building as a substitute teacher and, and, um, a replacement teacher, um, mental replacement teacher, when this transition occurred, and it was really tough on the kids in the beginning, and it was tough on, um, not to mention the staff, but, um, you know, it was, it was like a whole new world after about a month, you know, they just slowly kind of bought into it. You know, we don't, we don't give kids enough about, enough credit about being resilient, and, um, you know, you just actually seen this communication going, happening again with kids, you know. And, you know, you just actually seen this communication going, happening again with kids, you know, and just, you can see a little bit more attentive, attentive to details than in the classroom. And so, you know, we was talking earlier about, you know, we see on the news about some other schools doing this, but we pretty much pioneered this and, and, you know, we're ahead of the game right now. And you guys, I give you credits and hats off. Looking forward to see how on the middle school transition into this as well.
Mr. Perino.
Thank you for the presentation. How would you rate the effectiveness of the first year, Bill?
So it's a, again, we're, we're talking about our audience, and teenagers are, I think, kind of naturally wired to challenge things, right? That's just part of the grown-up process, so. I will say that we continue to have to refine kind of our, how we're doing things. Kids are kind of crafty, they'll figure out one way to kind of get the phones in, and then we have to adjust and. But, but as I said, you know, just, just the benefits come walk our halls. I, I'll say that, you know, if you have the opportunity to see and just, just see, you, you get an overall vibe, you see the connection, you see kids talking more to cafeteria. And I can't say enough about some of our cafeteria staff and the, the things they did to put in place, because if you take something away, you give it back. You know, some of the games that we have put in, some of the, some of the other things that, that again, have just kind of forced that connection and, and have really had a positive impact on the school, so. It's, it's, I'll tell you, it's a daily kind of reminder, like I said, and as we get a new class every year, that that's part of the reason we're doing this now, because we really want to get not only the young people on board, but, but the adults. Again, I'll go back, I'm, I'm a parent as well, I know. You know, and it's really nice to have the opportunity to connect with your young person right away. But we're asking that you trust us. We're asking, give us, give us a chance to, to really respond to your concerns. And again, please come to the meeting. If there's something we are not thinking about, we want to hear it, and we, we will make adjustments. We've continued throughout the whole process, and it is informed by the feedback from this community, so.
I think it's a wonderful idea that we're starting this in the middle school. It'll just make your job a lot easier, Bill, as the students get to high school. I know one of the problems, and it was expressed at the board meeting a number of times last year, the delay of students getting into the building because of the check of the Yonder Pouches. But I, I also believe that you've refined that process and created more entrances, am I correct on that?
So we didn't create more entrances, but what we did was, was do our entrances smarter. So just speak briefly about this at the high school. We have three different entrances, and each one has its own kind of different geography. Some of the things we really studied, I'm talking about, you know, taking a look, putting our eyes on it, watching the process. We had kids sign in in the front, sign in the back, so we can measure by, by individual, by line. How long it was taken to get through the line? We'd observe our practices, we'd see where we can kind of, you know, move things along. Some of the things we found, you know, different areas. You know, there was a whole host of combinations. There were too many kids in one area, and then it was all kind of going into a bottleneck, so we repositioned how we did things. I think what we down, what we were measuring, I think we were between eight and ten minutes, was about the average, probably from November on. So we had some initial things, and also please understand, and since I'm talking about this, the beginning, the first two weeks, there's a whole lot of things that happen, obviously, when school starts. Bus routes are set up, sometimes bus routes need to be adjusted, but some of that thing, some of those things we find out, you know, maybe they didn't anticipate that a crucial mass of seven or eight buses, not, they don't have the same pickup or whatever time, but they're all arriving at the high school at the same time. So we have to account for that. So that first two-week period is crucial for us to kind of get everything situated. So we ask that people be patient if we do have lines, but we do anticipate using the experiences we've got from doing this for three years now, to kind of anticipate some of those and lessen it, so it's not so impactful.
I take it, Bill, that you've coordinated with the middle schools, what happens if students lose the pouches or destroy the pouches? How many pouches they get free, am I correct?
Yeah, we, we, our, our policies are consistent. And as, as Mr. Redonia talked about, it's one free replacement pouch, and beyond that is twenty dollars. And we're even looking into different things on that, because that is an expectation of our policy, but we don't want money to be a barrier. So we're looking into different ways that we can kind of work with that.
Well, I know it's a challenge for both the high school and the middle school, but with the administrative staff, you have Bill and Dominic, I, I think, and Nicole, you're well up to it. So good luck with it, and we'll support you in any way possible.
Thank you.
Mr. Moore.
First, I want to say thank you for the presentation. This actually brings me back to when I was working in the City Department of Education and at P-Tech High School, one of the schools I was overseeing, District Seventeen. We actually rolled out a pilot program before Yonder Pouches, and it was interesting. About the class size, they're probably close to four hundred students in the, in the building. And it really took time for them to understand the importance, but it, it was like a huge collaborative effort and support. And we didn't have pouches, literally, it was like these, what do they call it again? It was these containers that we use, they usually store like laptops and iPads and stuff. We literally just gave them a number and you have a ticket, and that's it, you see at the end of the day. And for a while, it started off a little rough, but eventually it got better, and the students actually saw the impact of it. So I'm all in favor for it. And this was many years before Yonder actually took off the way it did. But something that I, I do at home as a parent, and it's interesting enough, my daughter attends the middle school, and she doesn't even think about a phone, right? But it also too is that we actually put in place on, on a device, is a parent tool. This would actually help us as a district and actually implement this into the, into the school, into the middle schools. It's actually parental controls, so you actually can block out, you know, all the stuff that they normally look at throughout an entire period of the day. And actually, that would help, because now they, if they're used to not having it, you know, throughout the day because of the parental control, it also, it ultimately make the, this process seamless and be able to implement a lot easier. So that's something I would love to, you know, if you have to show them how to do it on the phone, the parents have an opportunity to buy in, that would definitely help this transition going forward at all levels, you know, going, going all the way up. Other than that, yeah, I just think that was it, you know, I just think, I'm hoping that this definitely rolls out in a, in a good way, and, you know, we don't have any major hiccups or anything of that nature, but I'm pretty sure it'll be fine, so, thanks.
I appreciate that. And to your point, you know, th, th, this is why I continue to highlight, like, please come to the meetings, because this doesn't work if we don't have the support and the understanding of our, our community. And again, I, I lead as a parent. If I heard that, you know, it, where I live, th, there's a policy, and my kids follow it. But, you know, if they implemented Yonder, the two questions I would have is how am I getting in touch with my young person and what happens in an emergency? So, you know, we want, because ultimately the success of the program is going to be dictated by our partnership with our community. So to your point, that would be great. We have a series of town halls, I would love to, to share and pick your brain on that. But again, we need, we need people to understand the why behind it and then get behind us. So, so that's hopefully, again, last time I'm going to say it, please come to our town halls. And before I get off this mic, just real quick, I'm sorry, Ms. Perino, you had said something, Coach Wolsayer, mentor to many people. I stand right here before you as one of those that he mentored, both as a coach, a player. And then when I became the head coach, my first year, he was my assistant. We talk in this district all the time about legacy makers, and I'm going to tell you, that, that, that man is one of the biggest legacy makers in this town. His, his reach is far and wide, and we will miss him a tremendous amount, but his impact will be felt for generations to come. So I just wanted to honor that, that you said that, sorry, it was unscripted, but, thank you.
Thank you.
Did you want to add something?
I just, I just have one more question. What is the feedback from the educators? Because that, that's extremely important.
So the educators, I think they were a little skeptical at first. Like, okay, yeah, yeah, because it's difficult, it's difficult to get them out of their heads, but I'm telling you, one of the things that they were consistent on is cell phones, which were a huge, major problem, all of a sudden weren't in their classrooms. They got their classrooms back, so that's, and, and again, this is a refined, you know, there's a continual thing. It's not easy every single day to have that in place over years. So we have to go back, and again, this is why we're doing this, you know, let's, let's make sure we do it, put our processes in place and everything else. But that was really nice to hear. There's a lot of things we do and sometimes don't necessarily agree with everything, but that is one that's really easy to get behind for feedback like that. They got their classrooms back. So to me, that's worth it.
Okay, and so I'm gonna, I'm gonna say something, my conversation's to the parents. And then I'm gonna try to make a rule and see if the board's gonna overrule me on it. I'm going to test you guys out. So the first thing is to the parents. This policy's not going anywhere. So how hard it becomes for our students and how easy it becomes for our students, in my opinion, lies at the lap of the parents at home. So parents, as Mr. Donahue's already stated, if things go off kilter on the process, we want to hear from you to try to make the process efficient, try to make it as easy as possible for all of our scholars, all of our staff, our security guards in the morning. But it's a partnership with home, like most of education is. So we need parents, beginning now, to start having the conversation with your child, with your student, that this is happening, and try to get them used to it at this point in time, because it's not, it's not going anywhere. And if you look at all of the media stories, it's expanding nationwide. This is not going anywhere, it's probably going to envelop every school district in this country. We just happen to get in front of it. So from a parental perspective, you know, I commend Mr. Moore, what he mentioned, you know, what the expectation is in his home. That's an expectation that parents need to start having the conversations at home. You know, it's not easy, however, it becomes easier if the scholar knows that the parent and the school district are together on what the mission is. So please make sure you do that. With that being said, we have two meetings, August twenty-ninth, is that a workshop or a regular meeting? That's a regular meeting, and then we also have a regular meeting the day after school, September fifth, right? That's personnel only? Okay. But the August twenty-ninth, we'll do it for both anyway, August twenty-ninth meeting and the September fifth meeting. If it's possible to bring nine Yonder Pouches to our school board meeting, along with the device to take it away. And we're going to have every board member at the beginning of the meeting put their cellphone in the Yonder Pouch, lock it up, and then at the end of the meeting, we'll all get our phones back. All right? You gotta be in it to win it. We gotta be with it, so. Did he? Well, there you go. Oh, you did do it. All right, so we'll set the example once again, to make sure everything goes smoothly. Thank you very much, everybody, and good luck.
Good night.
And have a great rest of the summer.
Thank you.
Next up, we're going to move on to our board member conferences and professional development. We had a little taste from Mr. Moore. To the other section. Well, you know, when you said it, we didn't want to stop you, but Mitch and I goes, he's a rookie. So we'll move on, and we'll start off with Ms. Romero, if she wants to give her report.
We attended the twenty twenty-four Leadership and Education Conference in Albany. There we heard about, there we heard a lot regarding artificial intelligence, allowing an atmosphere for students to explore freely and safely, how using machine learning responsibly can promote critical thinking, problem solving, communication, and collaboration, and most importantly, how AI has the ability to personalize learning. Also, we learned about conflict styles and the importance of achieving goals as a board. And very important, and something that we will be implementing here, that we, that we heard a lot about was amplifying student voices by adding student board reps. And in this way, we are not only adapting better communication amongst all, but together, working as one to encourage, empower, inform, and educate one another. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Romero. Mr. Moore, did you want to add?
That was a great summary.
Mr. Perino, I know you sat on a webinar recently.
I think, didn't you go, did you go?
No, I didn't go.
Oh, okay. This is on artificial intelligence, is anybody?
Well, no, that's the next one, so.
That's the next one.
I'm sorry, so we are just talking about leadership in education. Okay, that's fine. So we're just doing the leadership in education, that's my fault, Mr. Perino. Mr. Mitchell Williams, my vice president, tried to correct me, but I overruled him and I was wrong, so. We'll move on. Who else was part of the leadership in education? Mr. Mitchell Williams, okay, go ahead.
Another one of the things, one of the seminars we attended was the use of data. The importance of data and everything we do to justify and for it to show exactly what's happening. One of the things that we noticed as far as with data is like, you can have twenty people that agree with something, five loud people that agree with something different, and you'll think it's the five loud people, but no, it's the twenty people, because everybody's vote counts. It's just the importance of crunching that data in language, language barriers and disabilities, crunching data in classification rates. Everything that we attempt to do should be justified through data. Professional development, the need for professional development. It should be, we should, the use of data-driven, everything that we do. So that's, we attended a seminar just emphasizing the importance of that and the various ways that we can use that consistently in making the decisions that we make. So it was very exciting.
Thank you, Mr. Williams, and, and I, I will commend my vice president. He is always asking at the table, show me the data, what's the data? Or if we don't have it, can we get it? So I commend you for that, so. Was there anybody else?
No.
Not from here? Okay, so we'll move on now to AI. Mr. Perino.
Okay, artificial intelligence. Yes, Mrs. Creedon and I took a virtual course on artificial intelligence. It was a very intensive morning course on that. And I liked the virtual courses, well, because they don't cost that much money, they don't cost us that much money. Well, it was early enough, yeah, it was early enough. So you can put me on the clock and I'll go for four minutes, and then I'll continue on the next time. I, I think I have quite a bit on this. I don't want anybody to get too bored here. Well, we haven't talked about artificial intelligence that much as a district. One of the items suggested, and I'll get to that, was that we have a policy on the use of artificial intelligence. All this, not all, but many districts have this and many more are examining this. So I would say our policy committee should maybe contact Erie County BOCs and look at some policies. So for the people who are not familiar with artificial intelligence, it may just be, I don't want to say transformative in education, but it's going to have a great impact on education. So for the audience that may not be familiar with AI, let me give a definition of this. It's the ability of digital computers or computer-controlled robots to, to perform tasks commonly associated with intelligent beings. The term is applied usually to project development systems with a system's ability to reason. And that's something new with a computer, to discover meanings, generalize, or learn from past experience. So that's the big thing, the so-called very intelligent computer. And the state Ed Department, the commissioner, seems to be behind this. Let me read you one example of this. When generative, when generative AI applications like ChatGPT explode on the scene a little more than a year ago, and this comes from this year, it's in July, this was on board on our publication, many schools and district leaders responded by banning the technology. Their reason, reaction was completely understandable. ChatGPT can easily be, enable students to cheat. It can produce college-level papers, which it can, analyzing literary significance of handle it with a click of a mouse. Boy, I wish I had that when I was with Mr. Barrett in high school, Ooh, Middletown High School. But the reticence faded quickly. Educators and education leaders came to understand that AI is here to stay. The students will need to use it as a tool throughout their lives. And that when used ethically and appropriately, it can be incredibly powerful tool to enhance teaching and learning. The future is now and we must embrace it all. But we also must do it with our eyes wide open. And the gentleman that presented this course, one sec, there were three sections of this course. The one gentleman, Dr. Mike Dougherty, and he is assistant superintendent of the Capital Region BOCs. And the actual title was A Correct Landscape of AI and Its Impact on Schools: Impact, Opportunities, and Threats. So, let me read you one of the uses that some of the schools have done with this. And if you've taken, if you've read some of the older literature, many students find it's very hard to comprehend. I remember that in MHS, we had to read Chaucer in the Old English, which was a, which was a challenge. So, what one AI app has done, it simplified that. For example, a tale of two cities. It was the best of times, it was the worst of times. It was the spring of hope, it was the winter of despair. Now, they've, what they've done, let me read you the translation. It was a time when things were very good and was it very bad? People felt hopeful and sad. I'll continue, time's up. I'll continue next time.
No, finish that thought, though.
Okay. So, what I'm saying, this is just one of the uses of artificial intelligence. There are many more and there are many challenges which I can go over at the next. I really found that course very, very good. There's a, there's also the acceptance of this. And the number of teens who use this varies with income and race. And we can get into that on the, at the next session. But I have quite a bit of this and I'll spend some time in the summer on the workshops with my four minutes to go over this as we go along.
I think if you can give us a report over the next few meetings on it, I think that would be great. I was reminded, I think Ms. Monchery just told us that we received an Erie One BOCs policy for A1 just recently. So, that'll go to the policy committee. And I would suggest that when they, that committee talks about AI, that perhaps they bring you into that conversation based on some of the information that you receive. Because it's, it's really intertwined into everything, even from a teacher's perspective. How much AI information do you allow a student to use when they're researching a paper and using it as part of its, you know? The old days, it used to be the encyclopedia and then the computer, and now it's AI. You know, it's hard to figure out. So, thank you for that information, Mr. Rett.
Do you mind if I make a point to that same point? You know, I remember in 20th century, they said, you know, look forward to all this technology where students will have information at the tip of their hands and that they will be able to really benefit from it in so many ways. And, you know, we see how, when you get so advanced with some of this technology, then you find out some of the detriments, some of the problems, some of the things, the forbidden things that children get themselves involved in. And I'm hoping, you know, that this doesn't become a problem with AI. I hope we learned with how we're managing technology right now. I mean, we went from outstanding technology advances to cellphones, you know? So, now you have an actual, in your hand, you know, you can access so much information. And then it became a problem in the classrooms. That's why we had to start, you know, looking at these yonder pouches and things, so.
Yeah, the hard work's been taken out of it sometimes.
And that's the point I wanted to make, that part of it, when you're talking about the research, the energy and effort you put into finding information and then being proud of it after you complete the process. Now, you know, it's just a shortcut, you know, in so many ways, even with the calculators. You know, they don't work out algebraic problems anymore. Now, they just take a shortcut and just get an answer, yeah.
Good discussion. Yep.
So, I just want to go back to a comment you made, Mr. Perino, about how teachers are using it. So, we did purchase a program with your support called Diffit. And that's a program that allows teachers to take tests and questions and create graphic organizers. So, we have a complex test. We can have it, either scale it up or we could bring it down. So, we had that opportunity. So, that's something that we've started using late fall. And our teachers have gravitated towards it. So, it's helped us a lot with differentiate our lessons. So, I just want to call out the program that we have been using to that effect, to improve student learning.
You know, there are schools that have, we have our academies. There are schools that have established a artificial intelligence academy. So, that may be something to think about. I mentioned this to Dr. Connell, who's always up on, very much up on technology. I mean, that's something, as I say, it's coming down the road. If you look at what state Ed is doing, they seem to be more in tune, for example, with how students access materials rather than the hard facts. For example, we used to do papers on, for example, Battle Gettysburg and so on. The thing that the state Ed is saying, how do you get the facts on the Battle of Gettysburg? What are some means to gain knowledge of this? And one of them is using this, the AI. I mean, with artificial intelligence, one of these chat box, you can input that and you'll have a college level paper on the Battle of Gettysburg or whatever, or a graduate paper on this. It's not only, it's wonderful in a sense and it's frightening in another sense. It depends on where it's going, so.
I want to add something too, something that we learned during the conference. There's a use of an app called Brisk App. It actually helps translate passages for ENL students. Brisk, like brisk, I see. So, it's, it helps translate different documents and passages at every grade level. So, I found that this is where it's more of the positive aspect of it, you know? Think how long it might take for, you know, the average human to translate at certain different levels where we have this app that could actually do it within a matter of seconds, which will help with the processing of your admin work. So, these are some of the benefits that I see that's on the teacher's side, where allowing them to have more, have them more, have, you know, free more of their time up and not have so many time, you know, catered towards their admin work on the backend. So, it is positive aspects to it. For me personally, I use a CRM system, which is a customer relation management system. And it actually helps because it literally does all the heavy lifting tasks that I would normally do manually. It literally doesn't, in the mornings, it literally does everything, all my follow-ups, everything. So, and it has a huge AI component on the backend. So, it has its benefits, but I could do, do say to Mr. Perino's aspect that it is a scary aspect at the same time because it's accessing all your information at every given time. And as everyone knows, data, data is the most invaluable thing right now in the world, so. Just hopefully we don't have it misuse our, you know.
Mr. Mitchell Williams.
Yeah, one of the things that I was able to receive when going to the AI training was like, it could, you could also use it to teach in a way that you can learn. Because people learn different ways. And it was showing how it could teach in a different way. Like, I'm a visual learner. You know, some people can read things and really just get it, the whole thing like that. So, it was showing that it could show you in different ways and I thought that that was excellent. Also, another thing for parents, you know, I remember sometimes the kids would bring something home and it looks like hieroglyphics to me. I'm like, I'm not sure what this is really, just do your best. But it was showing how AI could show the parent, can you, I can check the homework. So, now I'm able as a parent, and maybe if I don't have the education, but I know how to check the homework, I could utilize this to check the homework, which would even build a healthier relationship, a better relationship with my child. Because now we're having this dialogue about what's going on and I'm learning at the same time as I'm teaching. So, I've seen that that was a great benefit of it, me just looking at it from a parent's point of view.
I think maybe what we'll do is, now my head's spinning about stuff, is that maybe one of my objectives before the end of the year is to somehow figure a way to incorporate an AI board meeting. See how we can do something like that. So, of course, Crystal's giving me the deep stare over there. I'm going to figure something out, I, you know.
They're probably in two seconds.
Yeah, maybe we'll have an AI Mr. Perino come into a school board meeting in the near future. Thank you very much, everybody, for the reports on leadership in education as well as artificial intelligence. And we continue to learn here on the board. Moving on to our Board of Education Committee reports. Everybody's gotten the new assignments for 24, 25 committee assignments. Right now, we have, from a committee perspective, the Audit Committee with Mr. Tobiason serving as chair, Mr. Perino and Mr. Moore, and our community members Paula Blumenow and Linda Knapp.
Ask a question there? You want to wait till you're finished?
No, we can, you can ask for just.
Do we know if Mrs. Knapp has been contacted to see if she's still interested? And then can I also ask you to check with Andy? I believe our next meeting should be September, end of September. Because we, right, and that's what I'm saying. Could we find out his availability and perhaps Mr. Tuttle's? I think we went to a Monday or a Tuesday, the beginning of the week. You know, one of those dates would work with him. Very much appreciated, Crystal.
So, so what we're going to do after we go through all of the committee assignments very briefly, we'll take a vote on accepting them. And then we'll have the invitations go out to Linda and Paula and they can choose to go on or not. No, that was, you're good, you're good. Building visitation, building assignments this year at Middletown High School. Mr. Rett and Pastor Williams. Monthagen Middle School, Freddie Williams and Mr. Moore. Twin Towers Middle School, Mr. Perino and Ms. Romero. Maple Hill and the Maple Hill Annex will be done by myself. Presidential Park, Mr. Tobiason and William Carter, Mr. Mitch Williams. Any thoughts or everybody's good with those assignments? I think we've discussed them in the past. Change order in buildings and grounds, the chair will be Mr. Perino. Also on the committee, Pastor Williams and Freddie Williams and our community member, Ms. Sotero. Policy Committee, Mr. Rett. Thank you for stepping up to the plate for chairing, co-chairing with Mr. Mitch Williams, Ms. Romero, and Mr. Moore. Diversity Committee, Mr. Mitchell Williams, myself, Ms. Romero, and Freddie. Quality review of the IEPs, Mr. Perino and Mr. Tobiason. District Clerk Supervision, Mr. Estrada and Mr. Williams, Mitchell Williams. District Committee Board Memberships, District Safety, Mr. Perino, Pastor Williams, Ms. Tobiason, and Mr. Moore. Wellness Committee, Mr. Rett. BOCs Board Liaison, I'll continue in that role. City of Middletown Liaison, Mr. Freddie Williams and Mr. Mitch Williams is the backup. Town of Wallkill Liaison, Mr. Perino and Ms. Romero. Our New York State School Boards Association Representative will be Pastor Williams, along with Orange County School Boards Liaison. Also Pastor Williams, as I think he continues to serve as president of OXPa. I will be the parliamentarian. Teacher Center Liaison, Mr. Rett. My Brother's Keeper, Mr. Rett. Pastor Williams, Mr. Moore, and Mr. Freddie Williams. Our Diamonds and Pearls, Ms. Romero. Our Student Board of Education Member Committee, myself, Mr. Moore, Mr. Perino, and Pastor Williams. And for that, we'll probably schedule a meeting pretty much right after I get back from my vacation, if that's good. Because we're going to get started. And for those of you in the public, that is to put together the group to, not select, but put together the guidelines for our student representative on the school board. Also, if you can, if you can email out, remember the ones, I think you might have already emailed them out, the other school districts' policies that they have for student representation?
I didn't email them out.
Okay.
I have the packet.
All right, perfect. If you could send them out to each of the committee. Perfect, thank you. And we don't have a Teaching and Learning, oh, that's the one that we wanted to bring up, right? Did somebody want to bring up or touch? Okay, so there's two committees. Well, first, let's take a vote on those committee assignments now. I need a motion. Moved by, Mr. Tobias is seconded by Mitchell Williams. All those in favor? Aye, any opposed? So, that carries seven, nothing. So, we have our meetings for 2020, our committees for 2024, 25. Now, we wanted to discuss two additional committees that board members would like to bring to the table. Mr. Mitchell Williams will discuss Teaching and Learning Committee. And Mr. Rett has a committee he'd like to bring up as well for discussion.
Yeah, for the Teaching and Learning Committee, we've been having this, trying to find the right word, as far as with reading and math scores, as far as the improvement on our reading and math scores. So, with the committee is just taking a look directly into how can we improve that? Like, what are the different variables? And the Diversity Committee, we started talking about, okay, once we start separating the pie. So, we have the ELL community, we have single parents, we have different things that are going on because we're trying to figure out, okay. So, then we have, when we have this, if we, once again, crunching the data to see where is the problems at? Like, where is the difficulty at and what can we do to help out in that area once we separate that pie? You understand what I'm saying? So, it's also like with the Teaching and Learning, it's, it's just, as usual, with the data, when we have a problematic area, we check that. But that would be the first thing. That's my motivation for it because this has been going on for the second year in a row. So, it's like, okay, let's, let's see. Or even, even more than that, how can we assist? You know, with the committees, the committees are looking into things, trying to find out different information that we present to the superintendent, the different ideas that we might have.
I, I think you had mentioned too, is that by putting a committee like that together, it offers the ability for that committee to help bring the community in based on feedback that we're getting from administration and teachers and stuff. Like, there's a weakness in reading because kids are just not coming in. They're not reading at home or whatever. Well, you know, we, we have the ability to connect community members with the district if we need to, all of us as board members in our contacts in the community. I think it's a viable one. Mr. Perino always, every year, wants to see accountability for our, our media rest, math scores, especially early in our early schools. I believe as we get discussions on our board goals, that would likely be a board goal this year as far as, you know, seeing improvement in that area. I know we've had the conversation with the superintendent as well. I think it's a reasonable enough committee. I think Ms. Adoma is probably going to be very active with it too, from the curriculum perspective. But I think if we can maybe have three board members kind of take the lead with that and then coordinate with the superintendent and with the assistant superintendent for curriculum and stuff to kind of spearhead what the objective of the committee is, remember? So, the idea of a committee is you have an objective.
That's right.
Put together goals that are reach, both short-term reachable goals and long-term goals that are aspirations. So, you know, obviously, would you?
Yes, yes.
Take part in that? I think, you know, Mr. Perino, I think you, you would definitely be right up there. Did you, Rose? No, I think if we, if we want to do four, we could do four. Do you want to, I don't know, I know you guys are busy with other ones too. So, if you're good with those three, but I don't want to, you're good with those three?
Yeah.
All right, so Mitch, Mr. Perino, and Rose. And then you can just coordinate with Amy on objectives of the committee and then report back.
Sounds great.
Okay.
And before you move off of that point, can we just, I guess, state to the public how if they are looking to join one of the committees, who could they contact? And just let them know that, you know, there are certain committees that they, if they do seek some interest and they can reach out to the district clerk or yourself to, if they want to get involved.
I certainly have absolutely, and will, will go around and ask. I have no objection for us to list what our committees are on the website, in the board area, Board of Education section. And with the disclaimer that if anybody has any interest in any of these committees from a community perspective, to join us. That's how you bring the community in, to have a good, active discussion on how to improve things. So, does anybody have any qualms about that or you're good with that?
Go with it.
All right, cool. So, if we can do that, and then we'll coordinate with Mr. Witt about getting it in our tab. So if we can do that, and then we'll coordinate with Mr. Witt about getting it in our tab section. So for that Teaching and Learning Committee, it'll be Mr. Mitch Williams, Mr. Perino and Mr. Tobiasin. And then you're off now, Mr. Rett, off and running on your committee request.
Oh, yes. Well, I aforementioned about just bringing dads into schools, opportunity to just get them involved in some way, shape or form. And particularly, reading to students, president award ceremonies, mentoring and, you know, sporting events, seasonal performances. We know the role, first and foremost, we know what mothers do and how they are integral part of how our children live and grow and develop from day to day. But it's a special presence when, me as a former educator, and, and I know a lot of the female teachers as well, when they see a dad walk in that building for a parent-teacher's conference or supporting a different event or an activity, or we have read to Students' Day or things of that nature. I think it's a very important thing. And we know the research talks about how dads, you know, the fight on the road of building self-esteem and confidence in young men. We know that's a problem today in society. So they have a, they have a nationwide organization called Dads With A Purpose. I didn't really want to dwell into that direction. I wanted to get something more localized where we can, you know, reach out and just have an exploratory committee of just how we want to go about meeting and how we want to go about just planning and putting it together. So I think that we could start by, after I get more definitive information, I'll pass it on to Ms. Crystal Monchery and our clerk. And anybody that's interested out there that's listening right now, I'll have some more information for you sooner than later to see when we would like to meet and how we would like to plan this thing out at a particular location and time.
I think it's, you know, again, I'm not gonna ever say no to something that brings our community, our moms, our dads, our grandparents, whatever, into our schools and to help us with the challenge that we face each and every day. So I'm all for it. If you want to pick a couple of more board members and then do, or do your research first, whichever, which way did you want to do it? You want to do research first and then?
Both ways is fine. You know, I definitely said I was going to talk to Mr. Drew over here. And, you know, we have some other fathers that are, still have.
Students.
Children in the, in the school buildings. And the other point I was gonna make was that, I think it would be, it also overlaps, you know, with My Brother's Keeper, you know, and, and other programs and committees that we have. You know, it also lends itself to when we have the family meetings. You know, again, we can let them know what we're planning here, you know, so we can circle, circle around to different committees and see how we can bring people together.
Not, not to put a rush on everybody, but on some of these committees, I think it's important to have them in place and start talking about them so we can maybe get on the agendas at some of the events at the schools that perhaps the building principals can allow us to, you know, make a brief, and I mean brief, but a presentation to the parents of those particular schools. I think that would be, you know, especially open house or, not open house, yeah, probably open house would be the right place. Mr. Tobiasin, you got a question?
I don't want to be negative, so please don't take this comment. I think we've got to be very cognitiv of the fact that we have many single-parent homes where the male image is absent. So I think if we're gonna discuss a committee like this, how can we be more cognitive of that fact? And I don't want to say it, I understand where you're coming from, but you, you want to keep the female aspect out of it. You know, you're saying dads only, but who steps in if the dad is absent? Is it a grandparent? And then two, you'd have a male grandparent. That's only my precaution is, I, I think in today's world, we can't take a lot for granted. It's, it's not the cohesive family, at least that I was brought up in and probably many of you, where there was a mother and father. So that's.
That's a legitimate, legitimate question and how, how we address that. So I think that's important to.
Yeah, that's all I'm saying.
Yeah, that's why it would be exploratory.
Yeah.
We'll sit down and discuss those parameters.
Yeah, and I think it's excellent, I think it's an excellent idea and that's an excellent question. It's one of the things that we discussed in the Diversity Committee. You know, we started talking about the PTO and it's like, we don't have any men in the PTO. And it's like, wait a minute, we gotta, what can we do? What is that? What can we do to get guys motivated to come out? And so I think that's an excellent idea. It is an excellent question, but it's an excellent idea, Kurt, you know. So I'm looking forward to it.
I'm sure Ed Estrada remembers, Bill Gavin was one of the only parents, a male parent at, well, it wasn't Carter, it was Mechanics Town PTO.
Yep. He'll be glad we remembered him on here. All right, so great job on the committee reports. And hopefully, if you're out in the public and you'll see our information on the website, you'll be, something will, will tug at your purse strings to come out and help us at the committee. Also, good job, everybody. Next up, board norms and goals. What I'd like to do is, because I really want to get into the board goal discussion with Mr. Williams, is everybody went through our workshop where we put together our board norms and our standard operating procedures. Please, your homework assignment for the next two weeks before we get to the board workshop is to review the norms, right? Please, you know, take just one day to review the norms, make any edits that you think might be necessary. The idea is that we'll solidify them on, on August fifteenth at our workshop and then formally approve our board norms on August twenty-ninth. So we're off and running and have them in place before the school year starts. So on August fifteenth, on the agenda would be finalizing our, our board norms. And then August twenty-ninth, we would vote on them.
So you want to finalize them in the public session?
August fifteenth is the workshop, right?
Right.
Yeah.
Action only.
Yeah, so we'll just do, in the workshop, we'll finalize them. And then in the public is when we'll do the vote on the twenty-ninth. Correct, yeah.
Me again, Mr. Estrada. You know my push for board norms, but when I got home after the workshop, I really think the board norms and the board goals are one in the same.
I, I don't disagree with you. So that's why, but we didn't spend a lot of time on board goals, right? So what I'd like to do is begin the conversation on what everybody submitted via board goals now, right? The board norms, we did a lot of work on it at the last workshop. So as we tie the board goals now, we'll begin this discussion with the hopes of then finalizing the board goals on the fifteenth, along with the norms.
Yeah, I think where my confusion was, the norms that were sent out were dated 2019. We did work on them in 2022. But I don't, I think what we worked on in the workshop is a much stronger document, and I don't see a place for the nineteen or the twenty-two unless we miss something, which I don't think we did.
This is my, this is my personal opinion, but you guys can correct me if I'm wrong. The two nine, the 2019 and the 2022 draft, I guess, will be gone after this. This will replace that, because I don't even think that the previous norms followed any real guideline that, and we, what we utilized was the State School Boards Association guidelines to develop the. Correct.
Yeah, and, and it's not mandatory. The board norms are not mandatory.
Yep.
You know, so it's, but we're gonna, we're gonna set the goals.
This is how we hope to work ourselves.
Yeah, so the goal should, you know, be exactly.
Yeah, I, I didn't even bother, because I wanted to, you know, come up with our goals, our, our board norms and our board goals. But no, good question to clarify. So with that being said, so we're gonna do our, finalize the board norms on the fifteenth, and we'll take a vote on them on the twenty-ninth. And then everybody submitted the board goals to Mr. Williams, Mitchell Williams, and I'm gonna let him run the discussion with board goals. Or did I surprise you with that? You did so much work on it. You did so much work on it, I didn't want to, I didn't want to steal your thunder.
No, that's okay. So what we did was, we, we found a template of, from what the state put, because if it's not broke, don't fix it. So we found the template of what NISBA had with their goals and different things like that. So we asked various board members, well, all the board members, to submit your goals. We gave them a target date to submit their goals in. And what we would do is we put them in a different, because it's objective. So you got goals and you got objectives. Objectives are what you're gonna do to reach your goal. And that's how that works. So once we got the goals or the objectives that were submitted, myself and Ms. Monchery sat there and was like, okay, well, this one would go up under that, this one would go up under that, this one would go up under that. Now, we looked at it and we're like, okay, we can't have ten objectives on each one, because that's just, because, you know, with your goals, your objectives, they gotta be specific, measurable, attainable, realistic and time-bound. You know, because we got a year and we want to get all of these things done in order to be successful. So we said, okay, well, let's take a look at it. And the ones that are similar, we'll make sure we merge those together. So that's what we did. Then we also, we had the superintendent look at it, because based off our goals, then her goals will start to be made based off of that. So we have that ongoing thread, because that's what we're looking at, a thread of what comes from us to the superintendent, down to assistant superintendents, down to the administrators. So you're picturing a pyramid where everybody's on the same page, working in the same direction. So right now, this is just basically the first draft of what we came up with with everybody's, but we'll continue to work on it to see exactly, okay, what, because the wording has to be right as well. Some of our goals, we gotta make sure that we understand that we're not administrators. So our goals can't be as far as set as if we're administrators and we're running a day-to-day, because that's not our job, that is not our position. We're also not the superintendent. So at the same time, we gotta make sure our goals are not as superintendents. So a lot of our things is based off of policies, you know, and understanding policies and different things like that. So I'm looking forward to the continual conversation with this to make sure that we're all on the same page and things like that.
So maybe what we'll do is if, and Mr. Rett had a good idea. So I think everybody had, does everybody have, everybody has in their packet the individual goals that everybody submitted, right? And then we have the draft goals, which really we're kind of using, as Mitch mentioned, is taking these goals and kind of putting them in the language of a board goal based on policy and.
Yes.
Things of that nature. So I know sometimes it might be difficult to find out how we stated our goal individually and where it fits in there. So maybe what we can do real quick, or as quick as possible, and I, I don't want to make this a long night, so I'm gonna cut this off at nine-thirty, so we can all get home at a reasonable hour. And we'll go through everybody's individual goals, and then you can tell us where you see that fitting in the draft goal.
Is that what you, where we had put them in the draft goal?
Right here, if you want to use that one.
That was the final draft.
This was the final draft, right?
Yeah, but if we go through the individuals, I don't remember exactly.
How they align.
How they aligned in each one. Because remember when we sat down, so we look at Curtis' goals, okay, well, that one goes up under onboard, that one goes up under.
Yeah, and now it's been reworded already.
Okay.
Yeah.
Okay. So, so maybe what, what I'll do is.
Go through, just.
Yeah, so.
Say, well, this would go here.
Okay. So in the draft goals, you have onboarding, which is.
New board members.
New board members, how they're brought into the system, board operations, how we work. This is again going a little bit where Ms. Tobiasin said that it's, it goes hand in hand with some of the board norms. There's another one regarding the superintendent's evaluation. Some goals around scholars, some goals around community engagement. Then board self-evaluation, professional development, safety and security, scholar learning outcomes and also attendance. So what we'll do is we'll go through Mr. Rett's first. So one of them, and you guys don't mind if I just say who they are and what the goals are, right?
This is, this is a very comprehensive. If this could not be the first, give us all a chance to take a look at it at our homes.
Okay.
Mark it up and then decide where it goes. And then, you know, maybe the workshop would.
You want to do it that way?
That makes sense, yeah.
So now you have two homeworks.
Well, yeah, because we were just saying, we'd probably be here a lot longer.
No, well, my intent wasn't to go through the whole thing tonight. It was just, it was to go, it was, no. That's why I said hard stop nine-thirty was however, however far we want. But if instead you guys want to take them home and, and do them, I don't have any problem with that whatsoever. So what you can do is, and maybe read your own goals, right? And then see where they may fit in the perspective of the template that was given out, the big, the big one.
The template's in this packet right here?
Yeah.
Yes.
Thank you.
It says draft.
It says working draft on it.
So the first one says onboard, and that's for new board members. And then the next one is board operations. So you look at your goal and be like, where, where would my?
It's in your clip, if you take the paper clip out.
Okay.
And there's some duplication.
Maybe start with your top three.
Yeah, for each, each, yes.
For each of the things.
Yeah, if each, each board member can limit theirs to their top three.
It's a good suggestion.
You know, absolutely. And then see where it might fit in the bigger goal, if you get what I mean. So pick your three and then slide it into where you think. And then that's where we'll start our discussion on August fifteenth. Sound like a plan? Everybody good? All right, you guys are making my job easy. You just don't want an email from Mr. Estrada on the night before saying, I haven't heard anything from anybody. Just a little warning shot, so. The good thing is, I'm on vacation for the next two weeks, so you wait, be, not gonna be hearing anything from me. Okay, so.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I think I lost, so, board member, so we're all set with that area? Board member roundtable, anything new and compelling for everybody? You each have four minutes, hopefully you won't use all of it. Mr. Moore?
I just got one thing. So you know, I'm actually coaching my girls' basketball team at New York's Finest, so we are having tryouts later this August. I'll send out information on all social media platforms. We did pretty well, our first inaugural year as a, as a club. And so I'm looking forward to that, adding more to my plate. So I don't know how I'm gonna be able to do it, but I'll do it. I'll find a time some way. Hopefully, the AI could actually help me develop a clone that I could actually be in multiple places at once. But that's really about it. Just wanted to make sure everybody know that the twelve U girls' basketball club would be starting again this fall. And looking forward to seeing our amazing talent here in Middletown take part.
What age bracket?
Twelve U.
Twelve.
Twelve and under.
Have them come out this year to see one of the girls' basketball games and see Ashley McCalla play, because Ashley McCalla is going to be a star. And nationally, she's gonna be a star. She already is.
Understatement, yes.
Yeah, she already is, but, you know, I'm sure she'd be quite happy to be a mentor to some of those young ladies as well. So, Mr. Perino?
But in the interest of time, I'm not going to talk about that. I was gonna talk about reading, writing, arithmetic, but we'll be back. So, no, I, I just wanted to say the, I guess the door you opened was the length of the meeting. You said you're gonna end at nine-thirty. I think any, any board meeting, because we have people who have to work the next day. I don't think any board meeting, unless there's a compelling reason, should go beyond nine-thirty. A long meeting is not an efficient meeting necessarily. So that's, that would be my suggestion for the, I mean, we not only have members of the board who have to work, the board who have to work, but we have members of the administrative staff that have to get to work and some have to travel and and so on. So I would say we think about that and we condense.
That'll be my personal goal. Otherwise, my blood sugar drops, so. Mr. Redd.
Well, this is my second term, I mean, second year, and so I'm excited about getting off the rookie list. So, you know, it's really interesting. It's really interesting, though. Just happy to be on board.
No more hazing for you.
I'm not getting no more coffee for you, Mitch. But.
Get him coffee?
He was harassing, hazing me, John. But anyway, no, I'm just appreciative that, again, we have assembled a nice group here, a nice unit. You know, I've always talked about all organizations that have a shared governance, you know, where we acknowledge people's strengths for the betterment of the team. That's always been my thing. And, you know, we just had a situation earlier where, you know, we was in a situation where we had to agree to disagree. But, you know, again, there's a lot of learning that comes from that. There's a lot of dialogue. There's a lot of conversations. So again, as we move forward, you know, we can appreciate what everybody brings to the table and just continue to support one another and keep in mind what's most important, the children first.
Right, right.
Because when we get personal and we let how we feel about different situations come into play, instead of really sticking to the facts, the details and just pretty much how things should be run, if we lose sight of those things, then we run into trouble. So again, I'm just very happy and pleased with our district team as well as the community, school board team and working in the communities as well. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Redd, Mr. Bison. Thank you, Mr. Romero. Okay, Mr. Williams.
No. I want to piggyback off back off of Mr. Redd as far as this team and the commitment. I want to commend everybody for the commitment, collaboration as well as communication. You know, it's just been very respectful. It's been healthy dialogue and it's a pleasure to be a part of this team and I'm looking forward to the work that we can continue to do. Good night.
And I'm going to leave it with, I'm very proud of this Board of Education, even after only one month. We had a very difficult decision today on an employment matter. And as you heard and saw, it was a five to four vote. And for those out there who think that that there's a wedge or that means that they're not on the same page, you can all go to sleep tonight knowing that your Board of Education is full steam ahead, working together as a team. Sometimes there are tough decisions to be made. Sometimes the votes will be nine, nothing. Sometimes those votes will be five to four. But a good Board of Education lives with whatever the result of the vote is and you move on to the next task at hand. And this board, every single member during that difficult vote, whether the vote was a yes or whether the vote was a no, did their due diligence, they did their homework, they talked to people, they read all the material and they came to their own conclusion on the vote. And I'm very proud of all of you for doing that. As I mentioned earlier to many of my board members, my job is not to convince people. My job is to tell folks, this is where the resources are for you to look at, to come up with your own decision on a matter. So I look at five to four votes, just meaning that it was a hard decision and some people fell on one side and some people fell on the other. And then you have nine oh votes where everybody's says, okay, we all believe in this one direction. So I'm good with every, I I think I can speak for all of you that you all feel just as comfortable, whether you're on one side or the other side of the vote, that we're all working as a team, moving in the same direction. So with that being said, I want to thank Ms. Adoma, my sidekick.
Excellent job.
This evening.
Yes.
Mrs. Adoma.
Excellent job.
Our district clerk who continues to do an outstanding job, Mr. Tuttle, Mrs. Crawford and Mr. Bartlett, who's now on vacation, and Mr. Witt and our security guard and our IT staff, everybody.
Ed, I got one thing to say. One thing to say. No, no, not that, not that, not yet. You're going to like this one.
Just because I said 9:30 doesn't mean we have to go to 9:30.
What can we do about this air conditioning here, man? I am just bone to bone freezing.
Listen, halfway through the meeting, I did ask.
I don't know how you pulled it off.
So halfway through the meeting, I asked my vice president, is it too cold in this room? He goes, I'm hot.
Come on, Mitch. Come on, Mitch and Mike.
So with that being said, I'll have a motion to adjourn. Motion by Mr. Bison, seconded by Mr. Perino. Any discussion? All those in favor? Aye, any opposed? Motion carries nine zero. Have a great night. We have a workshop on August 15th and our next public meeting, August 29th. Thank you.